Welcome to the March 2th Durango City Council Meeting. We're happy to have you all here and thank you for those of you joining us live on D-Gov. Ms. Phillips, may we please start with the roll call?
Counselor Baxter present. Counselor Bettine.
Here.
Counselor Noseworthy present. Mayor Pro Tim Brooke.
Here.
Mayor Yusuf.
Here. Thank you. City Council, do we have any actual or perceived conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none, I'm going to move on. I'm going to ask Council before we move on to public participation if regarding the budget, I wanted to just have a council discussion regarding our budget item and see if Council would potentially like to consider more time for this item. We've received a very large budget book and it may be beneficial for us to have a little bit more time to review it, helpful and so that we can continue our review of this very important item. And we were suggesting potentially moving it to April 7th if that works for Council to continue this item.
It works for me. We didn't get the budget book until Friday. So I mean certainly more time, the better. That's helpful to the staff.
I think it's helpful for all of us, so I appreciate having more time.
I appreciate that also. I would concur.
Agreed.
Excellent. Okay, so with that, we are going to move, that would be a budget, that would be item 5.2 and that will be continued to April 7th. And with that, we will move on to public participation. If someone could please round up on me. If you've not signed up for public participation, please do so now. This is an opportunity for the public to provide comments or ask questions for items that are not otherwise on the agenda. When I call you forward, if you'll please join us at the podium, speak your name and address clearly for the record. Counselor Bettine will please be doing our timekeeping for us this evening. At two and a half minutes, he'll wave his hand to let you know that you're at two and a half minutes and you'll have 30 seconds from there. At three minutes, we will ask you to please stop so that we can continue and hear from all of our other people who'd like to speak this evening. And with that, I will start with Sarah Burris, please.
Sarah Burris, 112 East 31st Street. I just wanted to update you on the T-shirt bag project. The Myak, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council has been in all the schools and the rec center and we put them in the library and Smiley and the welcome center. But as of today, we've made 8,143 bags. So I just wanted to let you know about that.
That is impressive.
Yeah.
And I'm Michelle Perringer and I wanted to talk a little bit about the plastic bag ban as well. Durango is the Mecca for outdoor pursuits. I know this because I read it on durango.org, so it must be true. But in all seriousness, the majority of people who come to Durango come here to visit because of our beautiful environment and the natural wildlife that they wish to be surrounded by. So when a tourist comes here from another location that has already banned plastic bags, will they report to others that our town is not on board in its commitment to environmental stewardship as so many other towns, cities, and countries already are? I fear some already have. What good our beautiful views, our snow-capped peaks and rivers are filled with micro and macro plastics that choke the health out of our ecological balance? The highlight of a visitor's day, maybe spotting an unusual bird or a stealthy fox. But this unique environment can only exist if our water and air remains clean. Micro and macro plastics that come from the very plastic bags that are tossed in the trash without care are the same plastics that make their way into the environment and are mistakenly ingested as food by our wildlife, resulting in intestinal blockage and internal abrasions. Plastic bags are not the only culprits here, we realize that. But we have to start somewhere with the goal of decreasing our single-use trash. And here you have a group of volunteers that are all saying they are invested in starting here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathleen Adams.
I'm going to go second to my name to Lance.
Okay.
I'm the same. Hello, my name is Lance Kittle. I am at 150 Confluence Avenue up in Three Springs, brand new to Durango as well, so thank you for having me. I urge the City Council of Durango to thoroughly inspect the recommendation presented to you regarding the plastic bag fee. Seventy-four countries around the world, more than 300 cities in the United States alone, and 13 municipalities in Colorado have realized that plastic pollution is a global concern that must be addressed now. The State of Colorado's House Energy and Environment Committee is taking on the plastic epidemic by passing House Bills 1162 and 1163, bills that will reduce the amount of single-use plastics and polystyrene or styrofoams in Colorado. We must lead by example rather than attempt to follow and be left behind. People are demanding change and the resolution to restrict plastic bags in Durango is timely and in accordance with a growing number of municipalities in Colorado. Thank you.
Who are you with?
Oh, I also work for the Inland Ocean Coalition, based out of Boulder, Colorado. I work here in Durango remotely. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I would just like to clarify and state some expectation of our group that's been before you in the past as well. So Durango Beyond Plastic is not expecting the Council to work toward satisfying us as a grassroots group. We've submitted the best practices based on other city successes in our research. Parallel to this, we've all been faced, including all of you and the staff, we've all been faced with the hovering intention of the opposition affecting deliberation. The volume of flat, of facts, strategies, options, costs is mind-boggling. Whether you choose an ordinance or a ballot, we trust you to decide based on your comprehensive view of fact, history, and the temperature of the citizenry. I want to acknowledge the weight of the decisions you make beyond this. You have enormous responsibility and no crystal balls, which few people are willing to bear. Thank you on behalf of many.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Tim Walsworth.
I'm Tim Walsworth, 1880 West Second Avenue. I'm the Director of the Business Improvement District. And I am happy and proud and honored to present to you guys tonight a petition signed by 25 registered electors of the City of Durango as part of the initial requirements for our town to form an urban renewal authority. I can tell you that I've been looking at urban renewal authorities and thinking about it for five or six years now and we're this close to getting one. I believe this is a big part of our town's future. It's going to make many of the issues you guys grapple with every single week, this is going to be part of the solutions. And so I just wanted to let you know that I'm happy to turn this in. I'm going to give it to Alex Rugoff and he'll turn it over to the clerk tomorrow morning.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. For your efforts. Rick Cobb.
Hi, my name's Rick Cobb, 276 Octo Circle. And I'm here to make a comment about the capital improvement program ranking process, not so much, of course, I'm going to lobby for my favorite Three Springs Connector Trail, but it's probably just unfortunate timing that at a very important time to rank these projects, maybe the most important thing that these advisory boards do, that yesterday, apparently there are three new members of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And tomorrow, they start with a study session to rank projects that I just think it's really unfortunate timing that people who are very knowledgeable about those projects are now out of the loop and new folks who are not knowing what their experience is with these issues. I just think perhaps looking at the expiration of the terms, I don't know what the other boards are, but Parks and Rec, I think, ended January 31st and now it's happening. So it's just unfortunate timing and maybe some consideration can be given to shifting those so that folks who are familiar with the issues could vote because these are really important things. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Good point. Jason Hotchkiss, please. They're going like this.
Jason Hotchkiss, actually just outside of the city limits in La Paloma.
Do you mind saying your name one more time?
Jason Hotchkiss.
Thank you.
Yep. And so I was actually coming here tonight in support of Wendellin Omaña, who was going to make some recommendations in terms of some of the ICE activity that's been going on most recently, an apprehension that took place last week. And some of the things that we were able to witness and record in terms of, they had presented a fake warrant to an individual, they had been wearing, they've been identifying themselves as police officers, which I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure that they're not supposed to. I think Sean had told us before that was opposed to them presenting themselves as police officers. And so I think Companeros and a few of the other advocates in the community are developing, you know, a list of requests to try to work with the City Council to just start to create some on-paper type of understandings. And Wendellin just showed up and so I think she's better able to speak to, you know, some of the things that they're looking for so we can move forward and be, you know, more respectful of our fellow community members.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Can I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
If you'll say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Wendellin Omaña and yeah, I'm a resident of Durango, Colorado. I am pretty sure Jason already started the conversation about what happened and what has been happening in our town. It's my understanding that there have been a lot of meetings trying to make an effort for making this space, safe space for everyone. I haven't been able to with all of them, but mostly because there are so many things behind, behind the scenes. We're going to speak a lot about what is racism and oppression and we are going to be good, or they use the word that I actually don't like, civilized. But for the last couple of years, starting on exactly October 2017, there was a raid in town. And then the raids continue and 2018 was kind of mild for the sense of activity. But then again, on October 2018, no, actually it was February 2019, there was activity in a really big manner of ICE officers. Being a member of the Colorado Immigrant Rights Coalition and active with the Colorado Rapid Response Network for the last almost eight years, I had the training to kind of understand what to do immediately and then we bring, we brought more people, we start training more people. Locally, we start this network to respond rapidly for whatever attack happening. And I'm saying this because as a member of the immigrant community, I understand what is to be like, it's also being an immigrant doesn't mean that we are angels. And also being in the other side, understanding from my trainings that yes, if you are an officer, you have a mission to accomplish. So I understand their job and what they're supposed to do. But this has started happening to family members, to people who are hardworking people, and it started happening in front of their kids and it started happening in a very traumatizing scenario.
Wendellin, you weren't here earlier, but my hand just means you have 30 more seconds to present.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Last, it was Tuesday, a member of our community was stopped when he was dropping his kids at the bus station and then he was asked to leave, he was called several times illegal. He was told that their kids will be taken to Child Protection Services. My request to all of you is that I don't have the power to speak for our police officers, but even our police officers were involved right there. Like, they don't supposed to be involved in this type of arrest. It's not in their mission, it's not in their, it's not something that they're supposed to do. And also we have more ICE officers than per capita we need in this town. And also promising that they're going to take children away to Child Protection Services, traumatizing the family and also the kids when it's not actually a fact or a reason for taking the kids is something that needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just did want to clarify for the community and for the record that I believe that this event did take place in the county and not in city. So just for the record and thank you very much for speaking to us today.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Peter Schertz.
I live at 311 37th Street. I'm here to speak regarding the Anamis River Trail North and more specifically the 32nd, the proposed 32nd Street Bridge. I submitted a letter this morning to you, but I'd like to read parts of it just for the record. Thanks for slowing the process of the Anamis River Trail North Extension Bridge at 32nd Street. I urge you to bring it to a stop for some thoughtful reconsideration. The proposed design does not represent the final alignment that was settled on nearly a decade ago. Instead, it appears to be a hastily cobbled-together fix that has bypassed public process. The proposed design adheres to the postmaster plan goal of completing the spine of the art as soon as possible. However, it ignores important parts of the same plan that call for efficient and direct routes that provide real alternatives. The proposed bridge design offers a few, offers few safe alternatives to the well-established routine of crossing 32nd Street. The bridge route, the bridge routes are indirect and cumbersome to access North City Market, nearby city parks, and the vibrant North Main creative district. Furthermore, the bridge trail design itself appears unsafe. The T-intersection at each of the three on-off ramps, as well as the confusing pedestrian intersection at the apex of the structure appear dangerous. No amount of stop or yield signs will alleviate the congestion and danger. The recent parking reservations touting the new bridge design attempt to justify staff's choice by making quick dismissals of other proposed alignments. For example, the East Second Avenue alignment, the loss of parking issue at East Second Avenue is poorly explained by staff. This is not street parking in front of neighboring houses, but across the street from their houses. The underpass at 32nd Street option, it's dismissed as unusable during high water. However, when questioned about this at a May 2011 Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, the minutes read, quote, "Staff responded that it would only be affected a few days when the river reached 6,000 to 7,000 CFS."
Mr. Schertz, you have 32nd.
Thank you. Which is every couple of years. Thus, this underpass is similar to three other underpasses on the art which are affected by high water. It's time to objectively revisit the alternatives. In conclusion, the final design of the Anamis River Trail in the vicinity of 32nd Street is important, but it pales in significance to a longer-term concern. Let me just hit one more sentence. If a significant number of community members perceive the proposed bridge project as wasteful or misguided spending, the structure will serve as a monument for that sentiment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seth Fertney.
I come to you with a little bit of background, you know, first of all. Seth, your name and address. Seth Fertney, I am living at 11 Moses Drive up near Fort Lewis College. I come to you with a couple of pieces of background. One, I've been run over three times by cars, age nine, age 16, age 40, twice in Boulder, one in Durango. Not more than at intersections, just to let you know, but I have that experience. I've spent more than my share of time in hospitals. And I also come to you as a member of the Parks and Rec Board, but not as a representative of that board. So I've got a strong familiarity with all the demands on the post taxes that we have. So what are we trying to achieve, also on 32nd Street? We're trying to cross the street safely. Okay, that's a big deal, but it's not the only thing we're trying to achieve. There's a lot we're trying to achieve, which is to be safe on our city streets, to calm our traffic, to navigate, to have a full multimodal opportunity suite that allows us to navigate our streets outside of a car. So it's a pretty complicated scenario. 99.9% of the street crossings we experience across the world are at grade. Why? It's all we can afford. You just can't afford skyways and viets and tunnels very often. You do it rarely on an exception when things are really dangerous and really fast and you've got no other options. It's not something you use pretty routinely. Multimodal plan was adopted 2017. It has $160 million list of want-to-haves, improvements to the city multimodal network so that we can navigate our community more efficiently. It's a big list and there's 151 items that are called Tier One projects, including things like crossing the Anamis, crossing El Camino for the Anamis River Trail near downtown. There's just a lot there that we'd like to do and we can only afford a fraction of it. According to some pretty reasonable calculations, we can do about 10% of what we'd like to do. We've got a $330 million list of things in the post plan, we've got $160 million list in the multimodal plan, we've got a half-billion-dollar wishlist. We're going to have about $50 million over the next 20 years, 20 years. You want to choose your choices pretty carefully. If we were to follow the recommendations of our community, we've got, if we maintain what we have, which was the highest-rated priority by this community, $30 million is just to fix what is breaking. You've got the Anamis River Trail, that's $6 million. You've got Santa Rita Park, you've got Lake Night Horse, you've got Durango Mesa Park, which we'd like to get up onto. The Anamis River Management Plan, upgrading national parks or the neighborhood parks, that's half your money. The other half kind of does half of the planned extensions, the Anamis River Trail, like out to Three Springs, like crossing Chapman. Choose carefully. I think we need to focus on cost-benefit analysis and bang for the buck. It's important that we choose wisely with limited resources we have.
Thank you, Seth.
And just so you know, just so you know, when you start speaking, you have three minutes. When I raise my hand, it'll be when you have 30 seconds.
Where do we talk?
Right there. The microphone's right above you.
My name is David Torres. I'm here to speak about the bike trail. Very much against it. I have media, which I can't show you guys. I have a much better idea for the bike trail. It was about crossing 32nd Street. There is space on the city market side and on the park side along that path to make a bridge that will cross over 32nd Street and the off-ramp would be like a U-shaped to go down. I've ridden bike trails in New York, Philippines, Florida, and I've seen the trails. The bridge that's proposed here and about to go forward is one of the worst bridges I've ever seen. For $4 million, you could do a lot better and you could also improve the infrastructure of the trail, such as including maybe water fountains along the way, getting rid of those bumps. I'm just recently recovering from injury because of those bumps and my sciatic nerve. It could be done a lot better. There's also another trail that I've noticed by Mercy Hospital, it's not connected to anything. It's similar to the bridge nowhere, it's a trail to nowhere. And I would like to see this trail be connected to that trail, if possible, maybe over 550, 160, build a bridge, if we can go across it and connect that trail. That would be a better waste, a better spending of money than to waste $4 million on three large metal objects which are going to ruin the scenery, number one. I don't know what type of environmental impact it would have, but I think my idea is better, if it's about crossing 32nd Street, you don't have to build a bridge that goes over railroad tracks because then you have to think about maintenance from the soot, from the train going underneath it, and nobody's talked about that. Nobody's talked about bridge maintenance and bridge care over the years to come. If that's it gets under there, it's going to deteriorate the steel. There's not that much train traffic to call for a bridge going over the train track. It was just about going over 32nd Street. You might want to make 32nd Street the walkway, make it just a little bit wider, connected to the bridge, actually connected to the, across the train track, go up, nice ramp, ramp, go over 32nd Street and come down again in the loop and that would definitely be it.
Which means you have 30 more seconds.
I think I'm done. I rushed to get here because if I had time to speak, I would love to show you the media. If I could show it to anyone at any point, let me know, I'm available.
You can email it to us.
I've been looking for that. I'm new in this town, I've only been here for four years. I could even give it to you if you want to see it.
Yes. Ms. Robbs, maybe.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, now I can go home, relax.
Both can. Okay, we have our sheriff with us today as well as our Chief of Police that may want to respond to some of the comments made today if you'd like to join us at the podium.
Particularly referring to the ICE incident.
Yes, thank you.
Hello, Sean Smith, Platte County Sheriff. I'm not a resident of the city, I live in the county, but I apologize for I'm dressed. I didn't know you guys were going to be covering this until a little bit ago, so just tried to come over.
Well, thanks for being here.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The most recent incident that occurred, well, it'll be tomorrow, I guess, it was last Tuesday, did happen in the county. And there were questions, there's a viral video that's being circulated about that incident and a lot of folks contacted me directly. Initially, they thought it was me in the video and I apologize to that deputy because he got confused with me, but anyway, what happened is Department of Homeland Security has two different branches in Durango. There's Homeland Security Investigations, which is the side that works strictly on criminal type activity committed by those people that have connections to being foreign. And then there is ERO, the Enforcement Removal Operations Unit, which is the one that most people are upset about. They are strictly civil immigration enforcement. They both identify as Department of Homeland Security. So they contacted Central Dispatch, asked for Sheriff's deputies to come assist on a stop they were on because of a vehicle in the roadway. When my deputies arrived, they did not use lights, they did not participate in the detention, they found out what was taking place. They were asked to stand by. They were asked to stand by in case, because there were children in the car, child protective services would have to be involved in taking care of those kids. So that's why the deputies stood by in this particular incident. It's unfortunate. Our office attempts to avoid these types of situations with children and enforcing warrants when parents are on the way to school. We try to be more reasonable about that, but they had a legal authority to do what they did. Civil immigration enforcement is part of federal law. There's a debate, you know, there's been a debate in Los Angeles and other communities about those agents wearing, identifying themselves as police, which they haven't do. You'll hear from them, "police" is the internationally accepted term. If you go to Germany, if you go to France, if you go to Mexico, wherever you go, the versions of the word "police" are accepted, and that's what their argument typically is. I don't think any of us have the legal authority to stop them from utilizing that word. They are federal law enforcement. It's just they enforce civil immigration law and have that authority under 18 United States Code. There's only two entities within the federal government that can do that. It's Homeland Security and the FBI that have authority to act in this capacity. It's always a concern when it comes up in the community because we don't want to see misidentification with my staff or with City of Durango staff. In fact, Chief Branner and I attended a session sponsored by Senator Bennett's office last year, and we both said, you know, when we're talking about people committing crimes, we're there, right? We don't care what your status is, whether you're a US citizen, an immigrant, whatever, if you're committing crimes, that's our job. But if, back in 2006, the Colorado Legislature, I think it was Senate Bill 90, passed a controversial bill that basically, we refer to it as the Immigration-Mearing Statute, that authorized local law enforcement in the state of Colorado to essentially mirror federal immigration law and assist immigration authorities. It was very controversial when it was passed. It was repealed in 2013. And so that eliminated local law enforcement or state law enforcement entities from enforcing federal immigration law. Well, last year, they went a step further with House Bill 19-1124, identified as the Colorado Federal Government Overreach Bill, I think is how they identified it. And I will tell you, this had much stricter provisions originally in the bill, but essentially, and it modified Colorado revised Statute 24-76.6-102, referred to as civil immigration detainers. And it says, "The General Assembly finds and declares that..." And in subsection 2, it says, "A law enforcement officer shall not arrest or detain an individual on the basis of civil immigration detain request." So when ICE is asking us to go assist them in civil immigration detainers or civil immigration warrants, I personally interpret this as we should not be doing that by state law. We cannot assist them in doing this. Furthermore, in section 3, it says, "The authority of law enforcement is limited to the express authority granted in state law," obviously referring back to the fact that we repealed Immigration-Mearing Statute in 2013. But then in section 4, it says, "Nothing in this section precludes any law enforcement officer or employee from cooperating or assisting federal immigration authorities in the execution of a warrant issued by a federal judge or magistrate or honoring any writ issued by a state or federal judge concerning the transfer of a prisoner." So basically, it's saying we have to have something signed by a judge in order for us to be involved, because our job is not civil. Law enforcement at the local level in the state of Colorado is strictly criminal enforcement. We have nothing to do with civil. And so because this is a civil act of the federal government, it's not our job. So my, because of what happened last week, I have a meeting tomorrow, and we're going to be talking about revising our policy, making it clear to all of our officers. I mean, we have talked to them about this. We still don't know what the answer is, because when law enforcement calls for help, we usually assist. If Chief Branner calls me and needs help or vice versa, we're there. So when law enforcement calls for help, we don't know what the situation is. So we don't want to be in a situation where we don't respond because we have a community safety piece that has to be maintained. But if we're there strictly to help them enforce something civilly, we're going to walk away. We're just not sure how we're going to do this yet. We're trying to come up with a more valid policy on it, because state law now, I believe, is codified to say we shouldn't be involved in these activities.
Thank you very much for that explanation.
So that helps. In addition, because this will add further confusion, well, before I became sheriff, there are five licensed contracted detention holding facilities in this state by ICE, of which La Plata County Jail is one, that happened in 2006. On Thursday of last week, I sent a letter to US Marshal David A. Weaver, asking him to remove us as one of those holding facilities. With this law, with some changes, there's just too much liability. My staff has almost gotten fights in the lobby because a family will show up to bond someone out, and then ICE takes them out the side door, and they're like, "You took my money. Where's my family member?" We've almost gotten in physical altercations with family members in our lobby. On one occasion, ICE agents came into the jail. They do what's called a request for notification, saying, "Please tell us when this person's being released, since we will no longer hold them." On one occasion, they missed the person. My staff called, said they'll be on the sidewalk at 1:00, and they were late. So they missed them. So they came into the jail, found the file, pulled out a phone number, identified themselves as my sheriff's deputies, and called the family and said, "Your paperwork screwed up at the jail. We need you to come back." So we've had some challenges with this relationship. I get about $3,500 a year in terms of revenue for being a 72-hour detention hold facility. It took us some, a while, but we're at the La Plata County Attorney. We were able to work out some language, and I had a follow-up conversation with Marshal Weaver on Friday, and we are moving forward on stopping the La Plata County Detention Facility from performing these activities.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you very much. Barbara, if you'd like to add?
Hi, I'm Barbara. I'm the chief of police of Durango County. I don't have a whole lot to add to this. Sheriff Smith covered very well, so I really can't add a lot more content to that. But I will assure you that we do have a very stringent policy that we do have within our manual. Our practices and policies are very much in line with what the sheriff just explained. The only time, because we don't enforce federal immigration law. We don't enforce federal law at all. Okay. We don't have the statutory authority to do that. But what we can do is, if requested by another law enforcement agency or policy strictly governs us, that we will help with traffic control or to keep the peace. We're not going to assist them with the actual enforcement of those warrants or detainers that they're going to be trying to issue. So that's really kind of what it comes down to. We don't ask for status when it comes down to, we look at the behavior. So if it fits the law, then we're going to act on that regardless of what it is. We don't go into the depth of what those statuses are. So if you'd like our copy of our policy, I can certainly provide that.
That would be great.
It is open. So I'll provide that to Amber this week, and she can share it with you all.
Thank you, Chief Branner, very much. Thank you. Okay. For all of that community participation, we appreciate it. And with that, we're going to move on to our presentations. Census Committee presentation from Sandy Irwin.
Hi, as we're pulling up the presentation, we'll introduce ourselves as the committee. Up in our booth, we have Mitchell Carter. I'm Sandy Irwin. I'm the director of the library.
I'm Dan Armitano with the Community Development Department.
And I'm Vicky Danneriff with the Planning Department. So as we've been talking before, Census 2020 is very important. And so it's important for a number of reasons, which we'll spend a little bit more time at the end talking about it, but we also want to tell people how easy it is. So it's 10 questions, 10 minutes, and it's only once every 10 years. And it's coming up now. In fact, this month, people are going to get their letters in the mail to respond to the census. So what you're going to do, there'll be two mailings that go to each household. So anyone that has a mailing address of their household should receive two letters this month. The first one will go out March 12th, the second one will go out March 16th, that week, I should say. And this is what the letter's going to look like. So it's sent to your home address. One person responds for the entire household, whether your roommate situation or family situation, one person responds. And there's a couple of important things. It's addressed to residents, so it's not addressed to anyone, any one person. You will get a census ID number. That's what you use, there'll be a number in that box, that's what you use when you respond to the census. It will have a website, and that's what you, where you go to respond to the census. And then it has a toll-free phone number if you have any questions. Any questions at all about how to fill out your census, and that letter will include that toll-free number. And then there's also going to be enclosures in the letters. There'll be some additional information that the Census Bureau will be sending out. And if you don't respond after the first two letters, they're going to send you more. So then there will be another mailing, which will be a postcard in March, at the end of March. There will be another, a third letter, which is mailing four, which will include the questionnaire. So if you haven't responded online, then you will get a questionnaire actually mailed to you, and you can mail that back in. And then there's one final mailing in April, at the end of April, kind of another reminder. If you don't fill out online, they will send enumerators to your house to have you fill out the census. So it's really important that you do the mailings, and I'm going to pass it over to Sandy to talk about what's on the form. So there's been a lot of information out there about fraudulent census surveys. So you want to make sure, you can see right here on the top, that it's the Official Census 2020. And it says, "This is the official questionnaire for this address, and it's coming from the US Department of Commerce." Those are important things to note. In case you get something in the mail and you're not sure, look for this official information. That's the most important piece. So look out for fraud. There's always fraud. This is a list of questions that they will ask for many people in our audience and some of the subjects that they had today. There is no citizenship question on the census. But you can briefly look over these. I know our time is limited this evening, but these are the only questions that are being asked on the census. They will never ask you for your social security number. They will never ask you for money or donations. They will never ask you to do anything on behalf of a political party. They will never ask for your bank or credit card numbers. If somebody from the census, someone claiming to be from the Census Bureau contacts you via email or phone and asks you for one of these things, it is a scam. Please don't respond. You only want to respond to official census enumerators. If you ever have any questions, I have a website down here at the bottom. So go to 2020census.gov, and you can find all sorts of information about the census, including what a sample form looks like. And if you have more questions about the census, and you want to know why they're asking particular questions, please visit the census website to get those questions answered. Remember, that is 10 questions, and it affects our community for the next 10 years. So as we're looking at funding for a variety of things, answer the census so we can get the money that our community deserves.
Thank you. Excuse me. And just to broaden an update on what our local Complete Count Committee has been up to recently. Again, these are members from the community at large, the county as well as the city. Right now, the biggest push is into advertising to get the word out about the census. There's a number of banners that are going to be going up around town, around the county. We're going to have stand-up banners at the public library and other local area libraries. The census is going to be filled out online, so people that don't have access to computers can go to those locations. We're also going to have a banner over Main Ave and at Santa Rita Park. I'll touch on that in a bit. Newspaper and radio advertisements have been purchased, so we'll start hearing and seeing those in the next couple of weeks. And also, there's going to be some outreach into the schools. Pencils with Census 2020 on them are going to be handed out. And then for some of our hard-to-reach populations here at Durango, converted hotels and motels where folks are living, those places are going to receive door hangers so that those residents are aware of the census. This is a sample of what the banner that's going to go up downtown is going to look like. Big shout-out to Alex from Parks and Rec for helping us get this going, and to Mitchell for the design of that. Looks great. It's going to go up two weeks downtown, over Main, last week in March, and then the first two weeks in April at Santa Rita Park. Here's some more stuff that Mitchell and our PIO office has been working on as part of social media and D-Gob. A bunch of social media posts have been shared from the Census Bureau every week. 15 different public service announcements have been going out over the last month, played over 700 times in February on both D-Gob channels. And also, Census Info has been going out in our e-newsletters, City Currents, which is supposed to 400 different inboxes monthly. If anybody would like to sign up for that, go to durangogob.org/notifyme. And just to hammer this piece again, this is really such an important part of our federal processes, the census. Literally, tens of billions of dollars in federal funding is dispersed based on census data. These are dollars that can end up in our community and are more likely to end up here if we have a complete and accurate count. Demographic information from the census does help to drive our policy decisions here as City of Durango. Congressional representation, a number of representatives in the House of Representatives are determined by these numbers. And just to touch on what Vicky mentioned, it's 10 questions, takes about 10 minutes, affects the next 10 years. So everybody out there that's listening, please respond to the census. Thank you, guys.
If you have any questions for us. Just remember, if you don't receive mail at your household, you still need to respond to the census. You just won't have a special code. So please make sure if you have a PO box, and that's where you receive your mail, or you're currently unsheltered, you still need to respond to the census because it brings money to our communities. And if you have, you're going to have a baby, if that baby is born on April 1st, count that baby in the census, because children are one of the most undercounted communities, populations in all of our communities. So count your babies. Thank you. Yes, Steve?
Sandy, you know, might clarify too, was not on your list of questions that won't be asked, but the immigration status is illegal?
There's no citizenship question.
Correct.
Yes. Not on the census.
So if you do find one, it's a scam?
If you find one, it's a scam, yes. So they want to make sure that everybody who lives in our community is provided for, and that comes through census dollars. And census dollars only come our way if we count everybody.
And that includes immigrants, illegal or legal. If you're in our community, you could count it.
Because you count to us.
Just to clarify.
Excellent. Thank you so much for helping us get the word out and for being so active with your reporting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 5.3, since we're going to move, since we've moved to item 5.2. An Amis River Trail North Pedestrian Bridge Presentation, Ms. Kathy Metz. And following council discussion.
Good evening, members of City Council. Mayor Youssef. I am here this evening as the Parks and Recreation Director. We also have Scott McLean, our Assistant Parks Director, and Scott Chisholm. We're all three here to answer your questions. And to give you a quick update about what we heard in our listening sessions, as you know, we had four special community meetings this month, starting with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on the 12th, the City Council on the 18th, the Multimodal Advisory Board on the 26th of February, and then our last meeting was the 27th of February, a community meeting at the Recreation Center. All total, we had about 200 people that came to those meetings. And so we got great engagement from the community. And what we'd like to do tonight is provide to an overview of what we heard from the community, further explore the alternatives that were suggested at those community meetings, and give you a little bit more detail about those alignments. And then we'd like to clarify with the City Council what you feel are appropriate next steps for us. So that's really our goal tonight and what we're seeking from the council. So one of the things that we did hear from the community in the community meetings that we held was an appreciation from those members of the community about understanding more about the evolution of the project. It has been going on since 2008, and a lot has happened since that time. And so it was, I think the community did appreciate hearing more about the background and the details, specifically if they weren't involved all these years. We did hear a diverse set of opinions on the project from members of the community. We did hear support to proceed with the 2020 budgeted project, and we also heard a recognition of the safety and connectivity vision for the entire Anamis River Trail corridor. And alternatives to the proposed alternative that we provided to the City Council were discussed at length at all of the meetings. And we also heard questions about the need for the project, and if money that was allocated for this project should be, could be better spent with other Parks and Recreation projects that are out in the community. So we had a great engagement with the community and appreciated everyone that participated in those meetings. When we look at various design solutions for the Anamis River Trail, we look at how feasible is it? Looking at the existing conditions with underground utilities or topographical site conditions that we need to overcome. And we certainly look at cost in terms of what's associated with the best solution for the project, and does it meet the goals of the Anamis River Trail in terms of design, as well as aesthetics for the community, because we all are interested in... Because we all are interested in the aesthetics and maintaining a great Anamis River corridor for everyone, for neighbors as well as trail users. There were a couple of project givens that we have with regard to the standards for the Anamis River Trail. It is a 10-foot-wide, multi-use path, and that's a standard that we've held ourselves to for many decades. And we like to keep the gradient of the trail underneath 5% so it's accessible to those individuals that are either disabled or in a wheelchair. We also know that it's best to have a grade-separated crossing, which eliminates any kind of conflict between vehicular traffic and trail user traffic. And in this instance, an overpass is more feasible than an underpass. The other thing that we wanted to just remind the council about a project given is the Public Utilities Commission is the regulatory agency that is telling the city of Durango where we can cross the railroad tracks. And at this time, we can only cross the railroad tracks in an existing location where there's already a street. If we wanted a new trail crossing of the railroad tracks, the Public Utilities Commission has indicated that they would not grant another crossing that is just the trail. And then the last thing that we looked at was regarding the installation of a bridge at any location along the corridor. We have to look at the accessibility and the feasibility of getting equipment in there. And so I'd like to bring Scott McLean, our Assistant Parks Director, up here and he is going to provide you all the details about the various alternatives that we studied.
Good evening. I know all of you have seen this presentation at least once, so I'm going to try to just keep it to kind of the specifics, additional information that we've gathered from questions and from the process. If there's anything that I skip over or you want me to refresh, please feel free to stop me and back me up a little bit. So what we've got here are the, let me get the cursor, there we go. So we've got the yellow alternative with the alignment along the railroad tracks and then the dash line showing an alternative to being on the west side, going up the River Trail, that's just the spur that goes up behind the rec center and then coming down Second Avenue. We have the alternative that's the bridge crossing at 31st Street. And then we have the underpass that there's no possibility with the property news that we had last week of coming underneath 32nd Street on the east side of the river. So we've talked before about the alignment along the west side of the railroad tracks. Some of the benefits of this alignment are, one, is that it provides an efficient and direct route. Two, it minimizes the River Trail crossings of the railroad. We do not have a bridge crossing or an additional bridge crossing of the river associated with it. It does require modification to East Second and there's sewer line that's in this corridor, but it's going to be costly to deal with. And then I shared before, just the amount of structure retaining wall that's along this section would be significant. So this, the top here is the aerial. This was from a study we did in 2011 of the same analysis. This tan hammock up here in the corner of the roof line that's tan is just the northernmost house on the east side, and you can see how close we are to the trail. So the orange line is the trail alignment. The red line that you see there in the image is the sewer line. The magenta is the railroad tracks. So you can see, where I've got the cursor here, the white spot just to the, would be the west of the trail there is landscaping in the back as part of the residence of this house here. You've got about the same width of the trail between the trail and the residence. You've got about 14, 15 feet of elevation difference there. In the image below here, what we have, so this orange line on top is the profile of the trail. The magenta on the bottoms are railroad tracks. The gray between the orange and the pink would be retaining wall between the trail and the railroad tracks. So it's about a 10-foot elevation in sections. And then we've got anywhere between one to six feet on the uphill side of the trail. So there'll be places where we have about a 16-foot retaining wall there.
Scott, does the trail in this map encroach upon the property boundary or is it?
The property boundary, I could barely see it there, but it is actually west of the roof line there.
And Scott, could you go back to the, just for a minute to help me out? The previous slide that had the dotted line going up to the street would be one more back. So will you also talk about that option in a separate discussion?
I, yes. Couple more slides, I'll be right there.
That's what was presented by Ms. Hunter, I think.
Correct.
Design Review Board.
Yep.
So you'll talk about that.
Yep, two slides here, I'll be there. As we get to the north a little bit, you can see where the orange line starts to encroach on Second Avenue. This would be the case with either this alignment or just asking about coming down Second Avenue where we've got a clear zone and we have to stay off the railroad tracks. So that's really dictating where we're at with that pitch point. And then zoom in here a little bit more detail. So this is the intersection of 30th and Second Avenue. The dimensions on the bottom are what we have existing. So we have approximately 20 feet from the west rail to the base of curb and then approximately 32 feet from curb to curb. So that 32 feet, I mean, it's serving right now, it's parking on both sides with two lanes of travel. It's tight. Typically, a travel lane, residential like this, 10 foot would be considered tight. I think if you've traveled it, I mean, I've noticed that usually one car is pulling into someplace where it was out in place for somebody's park, the other car comes through and then you can kind of press on. If we look at the design, we've got 10-foot clear zone from the west railroad track and then a 12-foot trail width, which provides 10 foot for the trail, a couple additional feet for retaining wall in that section, a five-and-a-half-foot landscape strip and curves, a five feet would be landscape strip, half a foot for curves. This would be similar to what we have on Third Avenue at Memorial Park. That provides some safety for the trail user, a little bit of barrier between the road traffic and the trail. It also provides an opportunity for street cheese. And then we have two travel lanes at 10 foot. That leaves us four and a half feet without anything. So if we could make those travel lanes a little bit wider, I think the point is that we lose parking there on both sides or we sacrifice on something else. This condition is about half a block to the south, so about mid-block between 29th and 30th to about mid-block between 30th and 31st Street, we would have this condition. And then the railroad tracks start away from the road where we get a little bit more room and be able to start picking up more parking. And like I said, this would be both alternatives along the railroad tracks and then along coming down Second Avenue. So the Second Avenue, if we just stay on that, if we come up the trail behind fairgrounds, up behind the rec center and then down between the residence on Second. Again, we have the modification along Second Avenue, there'd be some loss of parking. We have a conflict with shared access through that block. We do not have an agreement with the railroad for any property south of 30th Street, so that would need to be figured out for both alternatives. The block is kind of a one-way in, out. There's not, so you really need to have two-way, maintain two-way traffic for vehicles between or just south of 29th Street. There's about 12 residential units. There's the Love Island County Service Building, Boys and Girls Club, service access for the fairgrounds where they're bringing trailers in through there, and then also the Recreation Center service access. Challenging to find a way that meets our trail standards and provides for all the use that will still occur there. It is, you know, it's a short section, it's low use, but there's a lot of uses that would need to occur in that shared space. A little bit to the north, we deal with the steep grade that we have about 200 feet that would be at 8%. There's a couple of sections that measure just over eight or at 10%. And this section here is also 32 feet. So again, if you come out 10 feet from the curb, that leaves us 22 feet, which either leaves us three, two travel lanes that are substandard and a parking lane, or we start to get into the parking lane on the west side as well.
So before you move on, Scott, I just had a couple of comments I wanted to make. And that is that this street could be a one-way street. And the area that's currently parking on the east side could be the River Trail. And this section particularly right here, if you did that, you could adjust that River Trail so you didn't have anything over 5% grade. And I don't think that these conversations have taken place or you would have mentioned them. So looking at this possibility needs a lot more robust discussion because there are many more options to this than were presented.
You're saying that you would lose the parking then on the one side?
Yes.
So, you know, I was just down at the Union Social House the other day on a Saturday and that, both sides of the street were lined with cars all the way out to park behind this car that you see on the right-hand side, right there, just as an example.
Sure. So the way you solve that is you make it a one-way street.
We have the same party.
You make it a one-way street and then you have parking on both sides of the road.
I was just asking, that's what I was just asking.
Yeah. So you can, there's multiple, that's what I'm saying, is there's multiple options. And one option isn't what I'm suggesting. I'm saying we need to look at all of them and see what would work best.
And how would you get rid of the grade?
Because it would be a separate piece of structure. It wouldn't be the road. You, if it were on the right-hand side, imagine that you could create it such that it was not at greater than a 5% grade. You could do that in that section. The only reason why it has to be right now is because you're contouring it with the road. If it were its own trail, you wouldn't have to do that. So my point isn't that I'm saying you need to take my suggestions. My point is that these suggestions and ideas and creative ways of looking at this particular option haven't been explored maybe as well as they could have been.
I mean, just anecdotally, it looks like the grade on your new structure would end at about 32nd Street.
Perfect.
Then we have to go or so.
Yeah.
That wouldn't cost any more.
It just would start earlier.
Scott, also, can you answer relative to the retaining walls that you were talking about on the rest of that particular?
Along the railroad tracks?
Yeah, there was some estimate of costs there that you mentioned in a previous presentation.
So in the previous, we have numbers that they were kind of planning level that you just used, height of walls as a general linear foot cost. The, in 2011, that was the most expensive option was coming down along the railroad tracks. So we followed the railroad tracks and then had a bridge over 32nd Street.
So if you took the parking lane to do that, you wouldn't have those retaining walls?
Yes. You'd have some to achieve that 5% grade, but...
Yeah, just for that, and they aren't really retaining walls, they're ways between the grade. But it wouldn't be retaining walls for the, to stay away from the retaining.
And what was making it the most expensive option was the retaining?
Was the retaining walls and especially that pitch point between the residence and the railroad track just to the south of here.
Have we heard from any of the residents along that street since our, you know, we heard from a couple of them in our four session workshop, but specifically those folks, I know there's been some property ownership changes along, right behind the rec center, for example, that first block, which is the pinch point for usability and access to all those censu...
I'm not aware of any of the folks from that block being at any of the public meetings and no, we have not heard from them recently. And there has been some ownership change since 2011 in that area.
That'd be sort of interesting to evaluate.
As well.
But, yeah, I'm sorry to jump in.
That's okay. So this alternative is coming up Memorial Park, an underpass under 32nd Street, a cloverleaf or a turnaround coming through the property to the north of 32nd Street on the east side, and then either coming across a bridge adjacent to the existing bridge or a modification of the existing bridge and then attaching to Anamis City Park. A couple issues. One is building within the river, construction, additional cost with that. Two would be just the high flows and the impacts there. The loop that we have here, which we're trying to maximize, the space we have in that property is at an 8% grade, which is greater than the 5% we want to be at, so we're steeper. We need to look at that a little bit more and see if this, again, was done in 2011, but further evaluation if there's a way to get that grade.
So Scott, thank you. I'm not necessarily advocating this, but I'm asking the question because we have a history of engineering the river in some places. Could we actually create a deeper channel in that area so that your sense of flooding might be reduced? I mean, we've done it elsewhere along the Anamis. I'm not advocating and I'm just asking if it's an option.
I think it would be a possibility that would be, need to be engineered and what the impacts to this site and then everything upriver of it would be.
Sounds like to Corv engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah, Corv engineers would definitely be involved in this.
Yeah.
In this one too, on the front page of the Herald, we do real estate deals all the time, so, you know, that's facetious. But now that that property has been deemed available and the impact if this were to occur is constricted as you just pointed out, and the remaining house is right there, which doesn't show up in this particular area of photograph, yeah, that seems like an incredible impact to the relatives of the people that would be selling this house or selling that property to do this. You know, I functionally like this concept, you know, I think it has some merit, but it also has impact to the folks along East Third Avenue that have been impacted by the evolution of the put-in and its extreme use and parking impact and so forth. I don't see that the trail linkage would add to that necessarily. Perhaps it'd be more people to the existing put-in more conveniently, but I'd see that as a little bit constricted at this point, but certainly worth evaluation now that we know the property's available.
Scott, is there a sense of, when you studied this before, was there a sense of the cost differential for the underpass versus what you have now as your?
The structure coming underneath the underpass was less expensive than the 32nd Street bridge. If we just had the bridge section over 32nd Street. The additional cost or what we were estimating at that point for the property made it significantly more expensive for this option because of the property acquisition.
So now with the increased cost of that property that you might estimate into it, it's to be at a higher total cost, you feel?
I would think that it would translate to the data, but I think we'd also want the engineer to look at it more closely and have some more of the details to give us a better number.
Higher than 4.1, which includes the spur behind City Market?
That's what I would want to review with the engineer and get him to give us more current numbers.
Yeah, I would want current numbers.
So a couple of concerns with the bridge in this location. An advantage is it's right next to 32nd Street. It makes it easier for crane access to install it there. We are very limited on the west side as far as where we have access. We've got a river on one side, we're flooding 32nd on the other and the railroad tracks, which really only leaves us the one side to have clean access to it. Not that it can't be done, but it's going to be a little bit more challenging, a little bit more costly. The other option that we have...
Scott, why are you assuming that you would build an additional piece on the north side of the 32nd?
I was not, I think I said earlier, but we were looking at both the option of an additional bridge and also reusing the existing bridge.
Was that your question?
Yeah, I just, because that drawing to me looks like there's an additional section added on the bridge, so that's why I was...
Yes. This drawing was done in 2011. I just pulled it from the work we did then and so that's what...
So the cost of it includes that additional section?
The cost that we were just talking about was the underpass of 32nd versus an overpass of 32nd and did not include this at that point.
Okay.
This bridge was being compared to a bridge farther north, so this bridge was in a different segment as far as our breakout, so.
Scott, if I may, because I'm not certain you're going to show another slide like that, is there a possibility on that northern side, you've got the sidewalk, and then if I remember correctly, there's also a bicycle lane and a small, a divider and a very, very short bicycle lane, right? Is there any possibility of taking over some more footage from 32nd Street? So I'm looking...
For the bridge?
No, not for the bridge.
I think what you're saying is that there's a bike lane on each side and a sidewalk on each side.
Right.
So the need to put an addition to the bridge is not necessary because you have a bike lane and a walking lane. And as a matter of fact, they're separated from each other and you could add another separator between the bike lane and the vehicle lane and therefore you'd have clear access for bikes and separated pedestrians separated from vehicles, so.
Said much more eloquently, thank you.
That's okay, I've been talking about it for five months.
Yeah, no, I just, so I was looking at, you know, it doesn't necessarily achieve the big vision, but it still provides for safe crossing. And it's separated from traffic. And so I'm just looking at the option for that with the underpass.
So that, yes, we could look at both and evaluate both. We have had some conversations with streets and with engineering. They feel like we've got three lanes across the bridge now that are 11 foot. They feel like that's been pushed as tight as we can get it. Jersey barrier, if we're looking at about a foot and a half, and then typically you want to leave another foot and a half or more as a buffer between the jersey barrier and the travel lane. So we would need to look at...
Scott, you don't need to put a jersey barrier in between the bike lane and the vehicular traffic. There are many, many other kinds of separated bike lane, vehicle traffic.
You're right. Correct.
And again, that's another option that hasn't been looked at.
You could use delineator post, or, or, uh, bollards, or...
There's no...
...architekters, or planters, or...
So, we're talking options.
I think, let's see, let's ask what we're not getting in this picture, which is, uh, obviously, not obviously, I'm asking, is, uh, at-grade crossing of the railroad track. Uh, so we're not elevating above, so we're, everybody's running across the railroad track in this case?
Just like they do at the Demon River.
I, excuse me, uh, and, and it doesn't deal with the slope, the radical slope coming down 32nd Street at that point, at, at which point you cross the track, so, uh, and, uh, you know, to Barbara's point too, you've got five feet of pedestrian on one side, perhaps five feet of bicycles on the other side in its current bridge configuration, but there's no cross, you know, you still have to cross 32nd Street if you, if you're going to use all the sides of the bridge, effectively. So, I mean, there's a lot of complications here, but fundamentally, we are...
Only use one side of the bridge.
Yeah, I don't get your point.
Because there's a bike lane and a sidewalk on each side, on each side.
Okay, 10 feet is our, is our standard, so...
It's, it's...
I had heard that each side is five feet wide, is that correct?
For...
Each side of the bridge?
Yes.
The sidewalk?
The sidewalk, yes.
Yeah. And then there's a bike lane on each side.
So, that almost adds up to what, 90?
It's more.
On each side?
It's close to 10.
It's close to 10 on each side, even available for pedestrians and bicyclists.
So, if that's successful, then, uh, yeah, you would need the 32nd Street crossover at that point, but, uh, but we still are dealing with slopes, and we have not separated from the train.
Correct.
Clearly, I'm just asking.
Correct, we're at great crossing of the railroad tracks.
One other clarification, I think Barbara alluded to it, but is it true that you feel that the trail would be partially underwater at, at the high, uh, high tide, so to speak?
So, what, what the estimating is that, uh, the trail, we have nine-foot of clearance between the, uh, the bottom of the beam underneath the existing 32nd Street and the trail elevation, that at about 4250 CFS is when the trail would be inundated with water. Um, I, I just looked at last year, and granted, last year was a big snow year with a extended, uh, flow, I mean, we didn't get a really hot period where it all melted at one time, but we had, the Anamis River was above 4,000 CFS for four to five weeks. Uh, as a comparison, the underpass at Knight Street were at 160, uh, at about 6,000 CFS, the water will start to lap up on it, and it's about closer to 7,000 before we actually have to close the trail.
Does that include the, the flood wall that you had built there?
That, that does not include this part of the flood wall.
So, with the flood wall, it's not at 4250?
So, flood wall would increase the, the river level, it would also increase, then we would need some sort of, uh, some pumping system or some way to, to drain that, uh, in a high water event.
Or you could create a tunnel, you know, like the, the channel between France and England, you could have it almost like a tunnel, I'm just, you know, making a comment, not suggesting we do that.
Anything else on, on that alternative before I jump to 31st Street?
Well, it's just evident, you know, in looking at that bridge design, that there's, there is quite a bit of space, so there would be options, you know, if, if, for evaluating traffic flows, downstream flows and bicycle flows, also potential, um, combination on, on one side, i- i- you know, I mean, lots of different things could be looked at, is all I'm thinking about with that kind of space.
One other question along those lines, when you thought maybe you could purchase this property back in 2011, how did this rank in terms of alignments at that time? Did this have a higher ranking, was it number one, where, where were you at that?
Um, I don't know, Kathy, you may have to help me with regard to the ranking, you tend to...
Or, I guess the question really is, was it ever number one, even with the considerations of the grade issues, being underwater potentially, the fact that you've got to either build on to the bridge or consolidate existing, I mean, there's a lot of, and you're crossing at grade with the train, so there's all those things, did you guys ever say, and the community ever say, "That's the one"?
But may I add to that question?
No, because I'd like to have her answer my question.
How many options were they considering so you could tell where the one is?
You can ask your own question, thank you.
Okay.
So, first question is, um, what was the preferred alignment before we actually decided, council decided on the current one that we're proceeding with? Um, the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board was none of the ones that we're looking at. It was an underpass of 32nd Street as you see here, but instead of looping back, it was going on to the 33rd Street River Access with the pedestrian bridge across the river further upstream by the 33rd Street River Access. That was the recommendation.
You can't do that now because of the PUC?
And there's a house now next to the house that's on the corner, and so conditions have changed, and at that time, we did think that we could cross the railroad tracks at grade, and now we know that the PUC, no matter where we bridge it, is asking us to go over the tracks at 22 feet, and so much higher, and I think the view shed impacts, whether we went to 30th, 31st, or we go by the 33rd Street River Access, would be significant for the community.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think...
So, how many alternatives did we look at? Everything that we're showing to you tonight that were recommendations from the community as they thought through design alternatives was evaluated in the 2008, 2011 timeframe, and so we, we looked at a lot more alternatives than we're talking about, because remember, we were going all the way up to Oxbow Park, um, but in, in terms of this section of the trail, we, we looked at all of these alternatives at, at that time.
So, I have another, oh, go ahead.
Was the PUC ruling in 2007, when they decided there would be no at, more at-grade crossings?
We've had a lot of conversations very recently with the Public Utilities Commission as we have, and that's when we got firm confirmation.
But that ruling was, I think, in 2007?
But, but we've been sort of not, it wasn't sort of like an old ruling, it was actually staff conversations with the staff members at the Public Utilities Commission, and that's in, as we were going forward with the Anamis River Trail North, because we've had a lot of conversations with the staff in 2017 and 18 and 19, so we are, it's, it's recent conversations, not...
Right, but I think the PUC had made that decision, hadn't they, earlier, and you just hadn't had a conversation about it?
Well, we had the conversation in that period between 2008 and 11, but the direction we had from their set at that point was challenging, but it's still being done, there's communities that have at-grade crossings of railroad tracks.
So, if I may, on that subject, because people have been writing and calling us all over, and I don't have it, I, I refer to you and to, to the city attorney, but folks told me that the 2007 PUC crossing, it was Rule 70, 7211G, no new pedestrian or cyclist at-grade crossings will be allowed in Colorado, and that goes back to 2007, so then the question I have is, if we knew that, why would we then be pursuing any kind of at-grade cross, or, you know, why would we be looking at it? And so, I don't know all the information, I put it out to you, it's just been shared with me, that the information is, the ruling's been around since 2007, and maybe we were not aware of it, or choosing to be hopeful that we would get a exception, I don't know, but I, I raised that.
Well, in our conversations with the Public Utilities Commission back in 2008, um, you know, they indicated to us, because we do have other crossings of the Anamis River Trail behind the Recreation Center, that's, uh, just the trail crossing, there's no road, um, and so we did certainly talk to them about that existing crossing, and so they were receptive to working with us on various design ideas, um, but perhaps, um, the staff, who's been there quite some time, has been there a long time, um, you know, as they began, became more familiar with our project, made it more clear that we could not do a, a crossing that wasn't associated with the road, and so I think that they were trying to work with us back in 2008 and 11, um, but it sounds like you found a ruling that applied to the entire state, not specific to Durango, is that correct?
That's the information that was shared with me, I didn't, you know, go through it all.
But I think they're really clear now, that, um, we can't do anything at a grade separated crossing, unless it's associated with the road, and in this case, with 32nd Street, we have a road, so we could cross at grade.
Okay. So, Scott, do you have more slides that you wanted us to see?
So, the 31st Street, um, Scott Chisholm's done a little bit more research on the bridge crossing there, I don't know if everybody has seen that, so I was going to share that, but the, coming across here, where you, we have a longer bridge span than if we are a little bit farther to the north, um, reached out to, to the design consultant, and then also to a bridge manufacturer, this is a similar bridge, 210-foot span is the photo of the project in Denver, the concern is having the access at, at 31st Street and being able to set the bridge from both sides, whereas I said earlier, if we were on 32nd Street, you can pick, the bridge comes in two sections, you can have two cranes pick both of those sections from the center point, as opposed to trying to leverage out across the river and doing it all from the bank, so what this structure allows you to do is essentially set the box or the deck and, and the, the side structure, um, up to the railing in, in one peg, and then come back at, at the arch over the top and the hangar, so you're setting it in pieces, um, as opposed to, um, two halves. The, the disadvantage is that this has a 35-foot, foot height, and this is just an example of something that's, that's been done recently, so...
Could I ask you on that 31st Street bridge, could you go back to that slide just a minute?
Yes.
So, the, the reason I ask it is I asked for it today because back in 2015, there's a CIP that says that, it's part of the 2015 adopted budget, that the, if I've been reading this right, and it's the page here, the council approved 1.1 million, 170,000 for the 31st Street Art Bridge, back in the 2015 adopted budget.
So, that is correct, it was an error by the finance department, um, that was the Memorial Park Trail, and so it was a trail that we built from 29th Street to 32nd Street, there were some improvements that were done on East Third, there were also improvements done on 32nd, um, and I know that that is something that was in the budget book, I'm familiar with that, I've worked with finance for years to try to get that title corrected to the correct title, it is the Memorial Park Trail.
So, so the page, the entire page that shows that in that budget is the same, it's a page that you guys do for all your CIP projects, that you create, and it, and it said 31st Street Bridge, and it had 1.171 million dollars for it, and so your department mistitled it?
No, my department gave the correct title of Memorial Park Trail, and the finance department labeled it the 31st Street Bridge.
In the CIP, in the CIP list?
Correct.
So, in the, so that full eight and a half by 11 page?
Yes.
And you, you didn't correct it?
I tried to, many times.
Interesting.
I, I ask that because, you know, I'm truly trying to get a sense of what was approved by previous city councils, and the best I can tell is the last maybe decision or discussion was that kind of design, not the design we're looking at now, so that's what I'm trying to get to, both, were any funds dedicated for it, because obviously we spent money on design for what you've achieved, so I was looking for some history of that, where did that money come from? And then I was also looking for what has, you know, and I recognize there were, I think, H, what, what did the alphabet go up to, H, I, J, K, something like that, options, so I was trying to just get a sense of, historically, it looks like that's the most recent discussion, when I attended, and I attended it, February 2017, it was that discussion that was kind of on the brochure, on the flyer, so I'm trying to get a sense of money appropriated for it, mistake or not, and what was actually the last time people thought they were looking at something? And the best that I can tell, that's the last thing people kind of got a sense that they were considering in a public forum, can you shed light on that?
When we finished the design process in 2008, the location of the pedestrian bridge is as you see here, and as we went forward with the development of the final construction documents for the extension of the trail from Memorial Park to Oxbow Park, the design engineers looked very carefully at this design in terms of feasibility and cost, and they suggested to the city, which we have discussed, um, with the advisory boards and community members in these series of meetings helped to clarify everyone, that they felt that it was most feasible to kind of connect the bridge structures and move it behind North City Market by 32nd Street for cost and aesthetics and feasibility of construction. So, we did start here, this was the location of the bridge back in 2008, but as we did further study and analysis, and actually did the final construction drawings, they determined that it was much more efficient and effective in many ways to, to move the bridge closer to 32nd Street.
So, that's helpful, so the most recent council discussion of what this might look like as a council was what we looked at in, in November, when we first saw the renderings in the study session, would that be correct?
So, the, the city council saw the renderings of the bridge in its current location by 32nd Street behind North City Market, and so that was accurately depicted to the council, and in previous meetings with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board...
But November was the first time we all, any city council saw that.
You, as a council, did see it then, but prior, there, in public meetings, there was discussions with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
But not another city council group before us had seen that.
Correct.
So, that's my point, is the first time we all saw it as a council, any council, was November, you know, you have the Parks and Rec Advisory Boards, and I went to those, but I, I, I raised that because November's not that long a time for us to come as a community to really see this as what it really looks like, and I was, I think I was at the same event, I was at an event at South Union, is that what it's called, South Union?
Social House.
Social House, yeah, and, uh, I was, I ended up driving down 32nd Street, and I was very, I tried to imagine what the view shed's going to look like as I'm going west on 32nd Street, and how much of that view is going to be blocked as I'm driving or walking, and I, do you have a video, do you have a view from heading east? How big?
This is the best view that...
Yeah, it doesn't show that, it's very well.
And what it shows is that the elevation of the bridge is, it doesn't go above the building at North City Market, and doesn't take out the skyline there.
Yeah, I was just looking the other way and seeing how much of the mountain scenery was going to be blocked as I was going east on 32nd Street, coming off of North Main, and I just tried to envision it, and to me, it seemed like we're going to have a big, diminished view shed as well, going in that direction, I just...
Mountain scenery, being the college?
Yeah, 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 you're correct.
Walking on the sidewalk, looking south, too.
It was just, I was looking at it from the opposite direction, so what this view is of.
So, the interesting thing too, you know, the Creative Economy Commission is doing a whole bunch of, um, wonderful murals on the sides of buildings, and the East City Market, or the North City Market is a wall there, is a perfect place for a beautiful mural that we could all see if the bridge weren't there too, so that's kind of an interesting concept.
I'd like to hear more about the four, uh, listing sessions that we had, you know, in, in terms of developing my evaluation of this, I mean, these are great discussions, and I think we need to, I'd be a proponent of delaying any action for a period of time to evaluate perhaps a couple targeted, uh, locations that we heard from the public on, and going as far as getting some costing. I'm reminded also that we're going to have a bid opening, uh, that will further inform, uh, the process here in March 24, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, and, uh, but anyway, perhaps we can just go ahead and hear the rest of your discussion, I, I try really hard as a design professional relentlessly to avoid becoming an armchair architect in any of these discussions, my job is to listen and evaluate and make my opinion, or make my decision based on public input, not my own thoughts and views, so... I think that's appropriate.
That was, that was the information we had on the traditional alternatives, and then these last slides were just of the existing structure, or the proposal we had out to bid, you guys have all seen that, so I'll just have them here if you have questions.
Okay.
And then...
I, I have one more thing, so, because I, I think it was Mr. Fertney who talked about the opportunity costs, and so the, you know, we're still working through the budget and everything, but the 2015, and part of the good thing that's coming about through work in all this budget is we're really finding things that need to be addressed and fixing them, and I give huge credit to the interim city manager, to Devin, to Wayne and the team that's really been tightening up that budget, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because the fund balances are, in some cases, under, have been under-reported, and in some cases, there's more in a fund balance, and in the 2015, and Wayne's here to verify, in the 2015 sales tax reserve fund, the fund balance, that's 184,190 dollars, that's it, it's not a large, so that doesn't give a lot of opportunity to purchase something right away, so my concern is that anything of this cost does affect what can be done elsewhere, and so I'm, I just raised that issue, that I think we all need to be aware that when we do come out with these, this budget notebook, we will be really comfortable with it, and it, to Wayne and Amber and Devin's credit, it will reflect... And to Wayne and Amber and Devin's credit, it will reflect the CAFR reporting and more accurate. So I think we'll have a better picture of what finances are actually available or not available.
Great. I have a quick one. Going back to Councilor Baxter's comment, just because I want to get my head straight about this, and maybe one of the design professionals, I know Scott's also in the audience too, how easy would it be to build that structure on the street to reduce that grade coming off on the, on the, what would be the west side of the river? She made the comment that, oh, that'd be easy just to reduce that grade going down. I wonder if you can take a look at that.
On Second Avenue?
Yeah. Just to place that comment, you guys have studied this more than any of us and understand the costs associated with that kind of stuff. Right there.
They haven't studied that option though, so.
Well, I know, but you just said it like it was easy, so.
No, but no, I'm just saying that it's just as easy as building a bridge across the river.
It might not be actually, that's what I want to hear.
Well.
That's why I'm asking.
It's a bridge.
Sir?
Scott Chisholm, I'll try to answer that question. So really, in order to get from point A to point B, it's a simple equation, rise overrun. And in that case, between 29th and 30th, you know, it's a city block and its length, pretty significant elevational difference. So the only way to decrease the gradient is to make the trail longer. And like Scott pointed out in some of the illustrations we have, we don't have a lot of corridor to work with. And so I think to your point, Kim, you know, could it be studied? Certainly. I think that it could be looked at further. I don't know if we're honestly going to realize anything. I mean, essentially, to go from 10 to 5, we have to have twice the length.
And then you have to get back up, assume you're not going at grade on 32nd. You have to get back up over 32nd as well. So you're going to, you're going to reduce the grade and you're going to have to stay at some grade at some point. So I'm just envisioning this and I don't know if I'm wrong, but I'm just envisioning it. That would be one fairly massive structure going all the way across to the other side of the river.
So you're making some assumptions that I don't think we've done enough studying.
I'm doing no different than what you did. You just made a bunch of assumptions and I'm just looking at it with them. You guys actually do this work.
One of the things.
I understand that, Chris. So the problem is, none of this has been studied. And there may be a much more efficient way, as you go to reducing the grade, to connect to the trail that you actually want to go up over 32nd.
I think it's a misinterpretation to say none of this has been studied. You just saw a presentation you've seen about 20 times now that shows that all of these alignments have been studied in some fashion or other, whether they could do it or not, including can you go in front of the houses that are above this? And can you go or can you go behind them? And all those other things, they all have big challenge. I mean, it's a giant conundrum, there's no question about it.
Oh, good questions.
I'm just suggesting more review of our options.
Could I get clarification from the Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Do you not, I was just trying to get a sense of what you were asking, because you were talking about different options and you were talking about not necessarily making a decision. So I wanted to get clarity. Were you asking that we as a council and staff look at some other options? And if that's the case, did you have specific ones that you wanted to be proposed that be considered? And what would be the timeframe for that? Because I, you also mentioned a bid coming open, but I also know that I'm trying to get a sense of helping with next steps for my own edification and for staff. So what do you, what were you proposing and what did you want?
We've arrived there.
I can be pretty specific, you know, we've kicked one topic down the road to April 7. I think that's probably a good timeframe as well, not to revisit, have the same meeting on April 7, but I think it's appropriate. You know, I know, and just standing here looking at this picture, just what Kim's discussing and listening to what Chris is saying too. I mean, if it's, look, you can see it from where this picture's been taken, to meet grade, I've been playing armchair architect here for just one moment, we would probably come out at 5% about where that car and the, like, wet car, white car in the distance is. And that is an elevation somewhere over the top of that yellow school bus. So just, I can see this is probably more expensive than I thought it was an hour ago.
Okay, and so there's, so there's a lot of, again, more assumptions being made here, but you don't know what that grade is right now?
Right.
Or where it starts and where it stops.
And how it can happen, and I think it, but.
You just need to have a look there.
I like this idea, I think, but if, you know, we've just had four public listening sessions, we've been accused of not listening in those sessions themselves. I listened, I know that you did, you were all there at various ones, if not all of them. And this is not what's happening here. We're listening, we're looking, and we're looking at alternate routes. We're, you know, I'm trying to categorize a little matrix in my own head about, you know, what we heard. It was ugly, it was too expensive, we should reappropriate it for other use, being Camino or Three Springs or Buckley Park or all those options that people think that they had $4.4 million, what they would buy. And, but I think really, we want to come back to function and how it really functions is an integral part of the long-term ART. And so to do, to get my head around it, I need another couple weeks at least, and that kind of puts us into April 7.
And then we would also have the bids would all be opened right there.
Exactly.
That would also give us more information.
We'd have that information, so we will know if we're over budget, under budget, or to solve the funding issue that may be diminishing our reserves to the point where it's unhealthy. And also, you know, I think it remains, you know, we're five people on city council, I think, we don't want to burden the advisory boards, but I think that is where this decision gets made, quite honestly. I mean, we need to go back.
The advisory boards don't make decisions.
They need to inform us.
Yes, they do.
And that's, you know, those people have lived with this issue, they can see, they heard those same comments, and I think we should, we deserve their input on everything that's gone on here in the past month and a half. And I would like this month to take it back to each of their boards, that being Multimodal, Parks Rec, Natural Lands, and either have a new statement from them or say we're good with our previously issued statements or some, something in between and get back and we talk about it again on April 7.
Okay. Mia, I just ask one more quick question, but first of all, let me thank you guys. I do appreciate the efforts and bearing with us. My question is about a lot of projects that have been appropriated and not started or not completed, and that's several million dollars worth of funding already. And so how realistic is that we'll get our past CIP projects that have been appropriated, you know, fixing the toilets at Rotary Park, not that I understand the cost, but getting them fixed at least, getting the upgrade of, from Iris Park to the Swinging Bridge, other projects that have been appropriated? How realistic is it that we can get all of this done in the next year? The caught-up CIP projects and this one?
So we are currently awarded a bid for the construction of the trail that is in Iris Park and Riverfront Park. That is going to start this month. And so it's very realistic that that will be completed. Our team completed the design themselves of the Late Night Horse Swim Beach. And because of capacity, we needed to get that out to bid so it could be open this summer. And so we held off on going forward with finalizing the bid documents for the Rotary Park restroom. And that will be next in line, and that should be issued for bid this month for completion this year.
Which parts of the trail did you say?
Yeah.
For maintenance, you said Iris Park and what's the other one?
So it's Iris Park and Riverfront Park by River City Hall and the Powerhouse Science Center. People don't know the park names, right? You know the buildings. And so right there, that's sort of the roughest section of the trail that people often complain about because the roots have pushed through the asphalt. That will be completely rebuilt. And so that will be done this year.
And then the other, where is Iris Park?
So Iris Park is right by River City Hall.
That's the Iris Park. Okay, that's the one, you're talking about both of those, okay.
But there'll still be outstanding CIP projects that won't have been completed in this coming year.
And what would those be?
Maybe Santa Rita, maybe the, because for a variety of reasons, but maybe the, isn't the funding behind the high school for upgrading the park also been appropriated? And you're waiting on the sewer issues there? The river trail behind the high school?
So the river trail behind the high school is a patch, an asphalt patch, and we seem to have gotten direction from the city council, they would like a rebuild rather than a patch. And so we're listening to the council and responding appropriately. And so that's a future capital improvement project, and we're not proceeding with a patch of the asphalt.
Yeah.
Because of your direction.
I think, I don't want to do it on the fly, so as we think about April 7 for that meeting, it would be really helpful for me to see anticipated completion of our appropriate, previously appropriated projects within the next timeframe so that we know we're not overly burdening the staff with so much that they can't get everything done. So I think that's, but April 7, I'd be happy to see that, those numbers.
Do you think we'll have more clarity on the kind of new situation on Fourth Avenue and that property, potentially a relook at that by April 7? Is that part of the thought process or is that off the table?
So what specifically would you like for us to analyze between now and April 7? I'm not clear on hearing from the council in terms of the alignments that we talked about.
That's good, yeah.
Do you know which, which ones you would like to bring us to bring more details back with you?
I for one would like to know what that, what the total cost potentiality of that alignment is now that you potentially know that that property is available. We understand and saw what the obstacles are, but there's certainly going to be interest in the community. It looks like a more elegant alignment. I think Council Brooke mentioned that as well. So I think we're going to at least want to have what is the proposed potential cost? And obviously the other list, I mean, you're still crossing a grade on the train, you're still maybe underwater four weeks a year, all the things, but definitely going to want to put that in the mix before we make the final decision.
I agree.
So more details on the underpass of 32nd Street on East Third Avenue and sort of the costs and the costs associated with that and looking at sort of how that would interface with 32nd Street, taking into consideration some of council's ideas about the existing bridge versus a parallel bridge that.
Yes, if you could cut, if you could divide out the cost, like council, you know, I agree that this is a great study to get more estimate on the cost. But if you could divide it out so that we understand if you were to do nothing with 32nd Street Bridge, but just the underpass and use the current bridge as is. Potentially with redesign.
With actually safety, yeah.
Yeah, but I want to see that, you know, what are those things? What are those costs? If you really have 10 feet, you still have a sidewalk on the other side, I mean, those are all important considerations.
Is there any other options?
Oh, yes, yes. I particularly like the, this particular, this alternative on.
On the street?
East Second, I was trying to figure out the street again. And with the idea of, yeah, if it was a river drive one way perhaps, and, you know, redo the street and it might end at a profile study. It could be just that simple, that it's not feasible because of the grades. I like particularly the alignment. And the other issue that I believe, and I wasn't on council at the time, in 2007 and eight, but I believe that there was significant pushback from the neighbors in this community. And as I mentioned earlier, maybe that's changed, maybe it's still the same. But if we start talking about it, we'll find out real quick.
Right. And originally, they were going to lose parking.
Right.
So maybe that's not the case. And it still includes the idea of a separated crossing at 32nd is what you're also thinking of, the bridge.
Right.
So it would be nice to know the cost of the bridge that would have to go in at 32nd.
Yes.
Versus not having a bridge too, so that we have those as that option.
So separate it out again.
Yeah.
So you would have the 32nd Street Bridge crossing by itself, so for a safe crossing. And then you would also, as a second, let's just say phase two, or the opposite, you would be dealing with this road here, East Second Avenue. I'm sorry, West Second Avenue.
No, East Second.
It is East, okay, sorry.
I know, I always think the river's the divided line, but it's not.
Okay, it is East Second. Okay, thank you.
So not particularly interested in the space between the railroad tracks and the curb, you're more interested in on the road.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, on the road.
Yeah, because it does, then you don't have that, you said something about utility line problems with that, and you'd have to do retaining wall and all that.
Very expensive retaining walls.
So we're trying to go with the best option with the least cost scenario kind of option.
And the safest alternative, is that important also to the council?
Oh, of course.
Okay.
But not, it doesn't have to be the safest, it just needs to be safe.
And then we will.
On 31st Street.
Excuse me?
Anything additional on the bridge crossing at 31st Street?
I'm not as interested in that as the rest of council, and I'm sure we've lost.
I'm less, I'm less interested in that.
Right.
And, you know, I think to what Councilor Baxter said about safety, I think there's definition around all of it. And so I think no one's opposed to safety or against it, but I think we have to weigh the cost benefit and the issues there. And so I don't think there's a definitive metric for that.
Well, there would, so there's, but there's also some interesting takeaways from this one too, which means that you wouldn't have to cross the railroad tracks at Demon Bridge. So you'd be taking away one railroad crossing to get here. And yes, maybe there might be a driveway that you have to accept or deal with, but there are, there are benefits also.
Absolutely.
And additionally, as we discussed, well, we'll get there another time.
And then, so right now, you have two additional options that the council is seeking clarity on. And in addition, at the same time, we will be getting, we will be opening our bids for the current.
That's correct.
Bridge. So we'll be getting that as well. So it would be information, more thorough information on three options, from what I understand, correct? That would be great information, I think, to help us.
Okay, sounds great.
And I would just also like to just thank you, Kathy, for organizing these four community meetings and putting this together. I know that was a lot of effort on your part, and I really appreciate you doing that. And I also want to thank the community for coming out and speaking up and being present at so many of the meetings. It was very helpful. We received a lot of emails, and I think that there has been some really great community dialogue through this process. I appreciate it very much. And I think we are at a point where we just want to take a pause, get some more information, and make sure we're doing the best option for the community. And I think it's worth, I think it's worth the extra time.
Thank you, we appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks. Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, we'll just read the consent agenda and tell them. Okay, we will take our time, we'll go slow, waiting for our counselors, but we will start with moving on to section number six, which is a review of the consent agenda. This section of the agenda is set aside for the council to approve by a single motion items that are not otherwise considered separately. So items that are the only, we will only consider items that are removed from this separately. And with that, Ms. Phillips, we can please read our consent agenda items.
So, items 6.1, 6.2, approval of minutes. 6.1, study session of February the 11th. 6.2, the regular meeting of February 18th. Item 6.3 and 6.4 are discussion of possible action items. 6.3 concerns resolution R 2020-6, assigning the City of Durango private activity bond state allocation to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority to support the refinance and preservation of Tamarun Square, a 68-unit affordable housing community. 6.4 concerns the approval of updated contracts for the municipal judge service and to reappoint Judge James Casey as the presiding judge for the municipal court. Item 6.5 and through 6.7 are request for public hearings with proposed date of March the 17th. 6.5 is to consider an ordinance to amend the sales tax provision of the code standardized sales tax definitions. 6.6 is to consider an ordinance authorizing a lease with the Four Corners Gym and Mineral Club. And 6.7 is to consider the formation of the Urban Renewal Authority.
I would like to remove two items.
Okay.
6.3 and 6.5?
6.3 and 6.5, anybody else? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with standing 6.3 and 6.5?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Phillips?
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Patine?
Yes.
Councilor Nowsworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brooke?
Sure.
Mayor Hughes?
Yeah. Maybe that's good.
Sure.
Our times are getting tight.
Yes, absolutely.
So the reason why I asked for 6.3 to be removed is because I want to acknowledge it, and I wanted Kevin maybe to give us a five-sentence or 10-sentence description of what's going on here, because I think it's a great occasion that we have the opportunity as a city to do this and help preserve housing for seniors and low income, so.
Good evening, Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager. So this agenda item relates to releasing, we have an allotment of private activity bonds Essentially, we have a little over a million dollars that we can use to assist with projects that benefit the community. It's a funding mechanism. It's not dollars of the city. It's not a loan. It's none of those things, but it's, it's a finance mechanism that's available through the state. Tamaran Square is the senior low-income housing project that's on 3rd Avenue right towards Florida on the west side of the street. 68 units and it's in need of some remodel. The owners are interested in remodel. They have a low-income housing tax credit opportunity utilizing private activity bonds. So they've received approval from the county to use the last two years, last year and this year's allotment for the county. Use, if it's approved tonight, use the city's allotment from the city. That'll allow them to proceed with the remodel of approximately $25,000 per unit. So really a significant upgrade. It'll also maintain the long-term affordability for the residents with an additional 30-year commitment. So this kind of fell in our lap a little bit. I mean, we didn't even have private activity bond allotment prior to January 10th. And by the end of January, the folks who were doing the Tamaran Square project came forward and requested use of these. It's an appropriate use. It meets our com plan and it meets our goals. La Plata County, because they've gone through the process now twice, essentially have went out and surveyed the community to see if anyone else was interested in utilizing this tool. There wasn't other projects that stepped forward. So we feel pretty comfortable that this is a good use of our first year allotment. There is the ability to roll these over up to three years in the future. That might be something to look at in the future. But for now, I think helping the Tamaran Square project, long-term affordability, another 30 years and a remodel is, rehab is really an excellent use for this first go-around. Kind of a low fruit almost and get it done.
Sure. For this million dollars, essentially we preserve 68, I thought it was 64, but maybe it's 68. 68 units as senior low-income housing that otherwise would have gone to probably to the private industry markets or would have been non, non, senior, non-low income housing. So I think it's awesome and I want to thank Kevin for working on this and also Jen Lopez for making the circle complete to get this to happen, so.
Thank you.
It probably wouldn't revert to anything else but portable housing, but it would, it might more scope to be completed.
Okay.
Seriously, I mean, it's, the tax credits will be, well beyond what they're, so, but it does allow, you know, it's a good use of this funds and it's not taxpayer, our local taxpayer dollars being expended, so we want to help these folks do this.
That's great.
And, you know, I think now that we know this fund exists and, you know, we develop a strategy for other nonprofits, specifically Mercy, BOA, Durango Housing and the other participants that we have in our community to take advantage of this on an annual basis.
Yeah, one of the, one of the criteria for this has to do with, it has a certain criteria for who's eligible for it and some of those, some groups are not, which is one reason why this is so perfect that we actually have a group right now that fits all the parameters in this particular situation. So I was just very excited about it and I wanted to celebrate it and congratulate everybody.
Really great.
Yep.
This is a for-profit developer from California that's doing, that owns Tamaran now, so it's, but it's good, it's great because they get to do more.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 6.3 on the consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Phillips?
Counselor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Broke?
Yes.
Mary Youssaf?
Yes, thank you.
So the other one that I pulled was the 6.5, which was the request for public hearing about our sales tax ordinance change for the standardized sales tax definitions. And, you know, this is something that cities in the state of Colorado have been working on for a long time, to comply with the ability to collect out-of-area sales taxes in a way that according to Wayfair decision are not owners to the companies that are selling product into the state. And I just want to thank Dirk very much for taking on this project. It wasn't under his purview originally and the speed at which he brought this forth, I really appreciate. So that was, the main thing was I, I'm so glad we're getting on board with this or hopefully we will with this vote. And then the state of Colorado can also, other communities also need to get on, but I think we're up to about 80 of us, so this will be great. Thank you.
Yeah, and I will just point out to council, I learned something in the last week that the Department of Revenue and CML are working together with other tax professionals, business professionals. There'll be another round of this probably, more substantive changes to the tax code itself. But this is round one and we can expect more probably later in the year.
Great. Well, when you learn more about that, please let us know.
Will.
Thank you.
So going for that, unless there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion to that we vote on 6.5. Oh my goodness.
Second. Second.
Thank you. Okay. We got a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Phillips?
Mayor Pro Tim Broke?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Nisworthy?
Yes.
Mary Youssaf?
Yes, thank you. Okay, we have no public hearings this evening. And moving on then to item 12, we've removed item number 12.1 and 12.2. So moving on to city update.
Yes, so I will be brief. We've been working hard on the budget and will continue to do so to get that all formatted, ready for the 7th. And then I'd like to announce that I will be having a coffee with interim city manager on Wednesday at Fred at 8:00 a.m. So if anyone wants to come talk about things that are going on internal to the city, I'm happy to meet with anyone from our community. And then finally, I will have a CIP report that will have incorporated updates. If there's any other final updates that any of the counselors have to the slides that we showed last meeting, please get those to me and we'll have the next round of updates for you. I did.
And I just have a question, Amber. As we wait for the April 7th meeting for the budget, will you be doing an update, not just on sales tax, but the financial status of the city at the next, in March, at the next city council meeting or?
We will have something in March at the next city council meeting. I can't say exactly how many months we'll have at that point, but I will be doing a financial management.
Great.
And I just want to thank Amber Blake, our interim city manager, for holding coffee. It's this Wednesday again, right? March 4th?
Four.
8 to 9 o'clock at Fred. I just think this is an unusual opportunity. This has not happened as far as I have been on city council where staff has made themselves available, you know, to our community residents. If you have questions, council, we've done that regularly. Various council members do that, have always historically done that regularly, but it's really wonderful to see our staff also making themselves available to answer questions, to give your feedback to. And I just, I want to thank Amber for being available and taking the time. Thank you for doing that.
And that is all I have for this evening.
Wow. Okay, so we are moving on then to item 12.4, Kevin Hall, discussion and policy direction concerning options for reducing single-use bag consumption in Durango.
Good evening, Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to only be here briefly. I'm going to have Imogen Ainsworth take the helm here and walk through the staff report and she has a presentation. But essentially, we're looking for some policy direction on the single-use plastic bag issue. In November of last year, you had a petition with significant signatures on it asking for action on the part of the council. Staff has spent the last three months doing a significant amount of outreach, not only with the Durango Beyond Plastics Group, but the larger community in terms of what, what they're interested in. There's history in here about the last time we went through this, about seven years ago. Hopefully, the staff report covers all the possibilities here. But Imogen has a presentation and she's going to walk you through the details.
Thank you.
Thank you. Imogen Ainsworth, Sustainability Board Leader. Just a pull. Okay. So I'm going to give a presentation which will go over the objectives and alignment for alignment with city goals for reducing single-use checkout bag consumption in Durango. And some background and context, the policy options available, and some considerations on crafting a policy if council decides to move forward with that. And the economic impact of potential action, implications of council action, and finally the alternative actions for consideration. So first of all, the question is why reduce single-use plastic bag consumption in Durango? And I think apart from the input that we've heard from the community around this issue, it's also in line with city council goals and actions adopted in the comprehensive plan. While plastic bags are recyclable at grocery stores, only a small percentage are actually recycled. We've estimated that there are 7.8 million plastic checkout bags used each year in Durango in stores over 25,000 square foot. This estimate is kind of scaled up from the estimate that was used in 2012. And there has been some research done by the Durango Beyond Plastics Group that suggests this could be a significantly higher number. As I said, alignment with city council goals, so particularly goals number three and four, and then also with comprehensive plan policies. So comprehensive plan policy 1.3.1 is served as a regional agenda and cooperate regionally to develop waste reduction programs. 1.3.3, structure city programs to encourage waste avoidance efforts and promote a zero-waste culture. And then 4.1.3, consider greenhouse gas emissions in city planning and decision-making processes. So some of the main objectives behind policies that could reduce single-use plastic bag consumption and the reduction of waste to landfill. So plastic bags account for approximately 3.4% of residential solid waste by weight. Reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So while solid waste is a small percentage of the greenhouse gas emissions inventory that was completed for 2016, and plastic bags are a small percentage of that solid waste, the best practice for creating greenhouse gas emissions inventories does not include the life cycle emissions of plastic bags. So the emissions that go into producing the bags before they actually come to Durango only accounts for the disposal. And there is research that suggests that 91% of the emissions associated with plastic bags is in predisposal. Number three is resource conservation. So reducing the use of checkout bags reduces the use of energy and water associated with creating those bags. Operational savings. So our City of Durango Recycling and Trash Division has estimated that it takes two solid waste operators, 30 minutes per load, to clean all contamination from our single-stream recycling loads. Obviously, that's not all plastic bag waste, but a significant percentage of that is plastic film and bags. Reducing litter and pollution. So bags, single-use plastic bags can end up as litter in both urban environments as well as in the river and other environments. Health impacts, there is some research that even safe plastics such as the CDPHE, oh, sorry, CD, whatever, the plastic used to make the plastic bags is, can have health impacts in our environment. And then number seven finally is encourage conservation thinking and sustainable materials management. So in line with the goals of the comprehensive plan, there is research that shows that kind of encouraging people to think about the life cycle impacts of materials can have knock-on effects for sustainable behavior. I thought it was worth mentioning that plastic, the kind of benefits and pros and cons of plastic versus paper bags. So while plastic bags do have unique impacts in the environment, they also have benefits when compared to paper bags. They're cheap, they're less energy intensive. So paper bags actually use more energy and water in their production than plastic, than the thin plastic bags that we used in grocery stores. They are more reusable than paper bags as well, but they do take a long time to break down in landfill. Paper bags have some advantages in that they clean, dry, paper bags can be recycled in our single stream in Durango, and they are compostable and rarely contribute to littering. But as I mentioned, they're more energy and water intensive and they're less frequently reused as well as more expensive. So a bit of background, a lot of people are familiar with the 2013 bag fee ordinance. So in 2013, Durango City Council passed a 10-cent fee on disposable checkout bags for grocery stores over 25,000 square feet. The ordinance was challenged by a petitionist committee and Durango residents voted to repeal the ordinance 56% to 44% in a special election. So I thought it was worth covering some of the changes that have taken place since 2013. So in 2012, when staff started researching the plastic bag ban, only two communities in Colorado had enacted legislation. They were Telluride and Aspen. By 2000, by January 2020, at least 15 communities in Colorado had enacted some kind of legislation on plastic bags, as well as over 300 U.S. cities, eight states, and at least 127 countries. The retailers, so national and international retailers have been responding to this, this shift and to the, the way that cities are responding to public demand for production in checkout bags. So Albertson's has something called their packaging pledge where they are pledging to reduce plastic packaging. And Kroger's, who own City Market, has actually committed to phasing out plastic bags in all of their stores.
By 2025?
By 2025, yeah. Some of the legal challenges that have been brought up with regards to plastic bag legislation. So the first one is preemption. So it has been in Colorado statewide, preemption of local prohibitions of plastic products since the late 1980s. Basically, a law that says that communities can't prohibit the use of certain plastic products. However, this law is not being currently enforced in Colorado. There are communities that have been challenged on the basis of preemption. The second legal challenge is TABO. So there is an argument, communities have been challenged on the basis of the fee collected from plastic and paper bags being a tax. However, Aspen, Colorado, the checkout bag fee was upheld by the Colorado Supreme Court in 2019 as a fee, not a tax, and therefore not subject to TABO requirements. And that's because the fee is used for specific purposes and not generated for the general So I'm going to briefly go over the various options available that have been used by other communities for reducing single-use checkout bag consumption. A plastic bag ban and paper bag fee, a plastic and paper bag fee, just a plastic bag ban, and then voluntary program of marketing. And some of the factors to consider when I'm going through these options are the effectiveness in achieving the objectives, any potential unintended consequences of these policies, the ease of implementation, as well as cost of revenue generation. So the first policy is the plastic bag ban and paper bag fee. Examples of where this has been implemented are Aspen, Avon, Carbondale, Steenbrook Springs, Telluride, and Vail. Some of the benefits of this option is that it's high impact. In Vail, Vail observed a 92% to 97% reduction in checkout bag consumption after using this option. And in Aspen, they observed after the introduction of the ordinance, 15% of customers leaving supermarkets with bags compared to 77% in a nearby town without legislation.
Imogen, I have a question.
Yeah.
How does this prevent a switch to thicker plastic?
In two ways. So mostly it prevents, well, it prevents a switch to paper by imposing a fee and it presents a switch to thicker plastic and paper by providing revenue to the stores that offsets the cost of the more expensive paper. So thicker plastic is still cheaper than paper bags. So if you don't introduce a fee on paper, there have been examples where there's just been a switch to thicker plastic.
So you mean that the stores themselves--
Yeah.
--started providing a thicker plastic bag than a thin plastic bag?
Yeah.
But there's a, so you mean versus just putting a fee on the bag, on the plastic bag?
So in most cases, the plastic bag ban has, and I'll cover this a bit later, but there are definitions around the types of bags that are banned. Mostly it's bags thinner than 2.25 millimeters. And so if there is no incentive for the stores to purchase paper instead of the cheaper, thicker plastic, then that has what, is what has been observed.
Okay, now, okay.
And also, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, Imogen, like in the city of Avon, they specified in the language they ban all plastic. Like in the city of Avon, they specified in the language they ban all plastic. So when you look back at that definition, to prevent the grocery stores from replacing single-use with heavier-duty plastic, just like you're saying.
Yeah, I just was just clarifying how that worked.
So by adding that language, you can control what they're able to do.
Yeah. And there is quite a lot of variation in what the specific ordinance of different communities have in there. It can be crafted.
Well, the reason why that sentence is confusing to me is because it's preventing the retailer from switching to thicker plastic, but it's preventing the consumer from switching to paper because there's a fee. So there's two different people acting in that sentence, and that's why it's confusing.
Yeah, sorry about that. I should have separated those two answers.
And I think the proponents' objective was to get rid of single-use bags of any variety and simply bring your own bags. Was the overall intent of the most recent advance.
Yeah, I think that's why including the pros and cons of plastic and paper is important because I think the overarching objective is really to encourage reusable bags. That's what most people would want to see from this kind of legislation and kind of policy. Yeah, so being aware of the unintended consequences of a ban or just targeting one type of material.
Like I say, we did not consider that. You know, we just figured paper is better than plastic was basically the extent of our foray into unintended consequences in 2013 here in 2015.
Well, have we explored the unintended consequence that cotton bags might actually be more energy-intensive or more harmful in the sense that you wash them and you have to do all the energy? Have we considered, is that considered in this equation too?
I know there is quite a lot of research on the number of times that you have to use bags of various materials before they, from an emissions perspective, definitely, and from a resource conservation perspective. I think the assumption is that the reusable bags are built to be used multiple times, and that over their life cycle, they have a reduced impact compared to the single-use.
And we have data to back that up?
There is lots of different research showing slightly different figures, but there is data that can be provided, yeah. And so the second policy option is a plastic and paper bag fee. And examples of that are Boulder, Breckenridge, Netteland, Fraser, Frisco, Winter Park, and Denver, most recently. Many of the benefits are the same as for the previous policy option. The revenue generation, the prevention of these unintended consequences. There are some communities where they've observed a reduction in the effectiveness of pricing over time, and that really would go for paper and all plastic bag fee. Where, say you started off with a 10-cent fee or a 5-cent fee, over time, people get used to paying that, and so the effectiveness of that pricing or behavior diminishes over time. The third is a plastic bag ban. Examples in Colorado are Crested Beaton, Ridgeway. And so the benefits are that it eliminates single-use plastic bags, eliminates potential concerns related to fee generation. It's simple to implement. It's a ban without having to collect fees. The negatives are its lower impact. So it's likely to result in a switch to alternative disposable bags, and there's no ongoing revenue created to support implementation of the policy. And the final one is voluntary program of marketing. Mountain Village has a voluntary program. And the benefit of this would be that it could be tailored to fit the budget. Potential drawback, so that it has a lower impact that is heavily dependent on the level of engagement and staff time. And then just in italics at the bottom, there are examples of programs where they have some combination of mandatory and voluntary requirements. So maybe a requirement for certain types of stores or stores over a certain size, and then a voluntary program for others. So some of the considerations in creating an ordinance. First is type. So there are examples of policies that apply to just grocery stores and examples of policies that apply to all stores. Restaurants, there are kind of an infinite number of options for what type of store you want to include. Similarly, size. In 2013, the ordinance was, the order stores over 25,000 feet. Other communities use 4,000 feet, 10,000 feet. Again, an infinite number of options for that. Bag definitions and criteria. This is really around that conversation about how you define a disposable bag or how you define a reusable bag. Like I said, most of the ordinances in other communities are fairly similar. 2.25 millimeters for the thickness of the plastic bag is fairly standard. Some communities also include a requirement that paper bags have X percent of recycled material. For enforcement timeline and fines, many communities have a six-month-ish implementation timeline to allow stores to use up their existing stock of plastic bags and also to allow outreach around the implementation of a policy. The fines for violation of ordinances vary widely between communities. And there are some examples included in the agenda document. As far as exemptions, there's a fairly long list that many of the ordinances include as exemptions. So things that are not banned or subject to a fee. For example, produce bags, bread bags, bags that are used to wrap fish or meat, that kind of thing. Trash bags that are sold in packages in stores as well. And then almost all the ordinances that I've seen have an exception for, an exemption for customers that are on any kind of food assistance program for the fee. And then as far as the fee itself, there's obviously a question around amount. Most of the communities in Colorado that have these fees either use a 10-cent or 20-cent fee. I think it's the one that uses 25-cent fee.
On the plastic or on the paper?
A mixture, yeah. There are communities that use, that have both of one and another. I could give a breakdown of all the different.
Do they usually charge different for plastic and paper though?
No, they almost always have the same fee on both. And then another aspect to consider is the percentage retained and remitted. So the percentage of the fee that's collected that stays with the retailer for use for help with implementation costs, like I said, to cover the additional cost of providing paper bags as opposed to plastic or the implementation of whatever the ordinance is, whether it's a fee or fee on both or just a fee on one. Then the use, yeah, so the use by the retailer. So the ordinance would set out clearly for what purposes the fee could be used by both the retailer and the city. In most cases, it's specifically for the implementation of the ordinance and then also for additional waste reduction programs. So the economic impact. So when we talk about the potential revenue generation, the dollars generated will depend highly on what the fee amount is, the impact of the policy. So if it's a more effective policy, the revenue collected will be less because more people will be bringing their own bags and not paying for the bags in store. And then also that cost share with retailers. And some communities have it set up where there's a cap on the amount they can collect. So it could be 25% up to $1,000 per month for the first year, and then up to $100 per month from then on, is one that I've seen. Or an example is Santa Fe, where they just have a percentage with no cap that the retailer can retain. And so obviously, there is, again, infinite number of options that you could look at as far as trying to estimate the potential revenue generation. But these were some numbers that I calculated based on either a 50% or 80% reduction in bag use, 10-cent or a 20-cent fee, and then the different percentages in the amount retained by the city. I think it was 75% or 50% that I used for that.
So I have a question. So if you ban the plastic, the fee on paper is to then help the corporation cover its costs because the assumption is that people will use more paper, it's more expensive, so now we have to help them cover their costs?
Normally, it's a portion of the fee is retained by the retailer for at least some period of time. And so some of that fee goes into offsetting the cost of the bags, some of that fee, if there's a ban on plastic, some of the fee goes into outreach and implementation of the policy, some administrative cost for them on their side with collecting a fee. So there's a variety of things that it could be used for on the retailer side.
Yeah, because in order for them to charge a fee of any type, they have to be tracking how many bags people are buying. And so there is a definite cost to them for this process.
And there's a setup cost that is greater than an ongoing cost.
Yes, exactly.
Which is why a lot of communities have a higher cap during the first year than they do ongoing orders after that.
Back in the day when we did this last time, we talked with the Kraggers and talked to Albertsons. They both had a mechanism to do that. And I think Walmart certainly has in the interim as well. That, you know, the lady in charge of the Kraggers Environmental Department said, "No problem, we do it in Boulder." You know, she cited all the places they currently do it, and we just change the software and it's done. So it wasn't an onerous process, but it's not without its implications.
There's training too involved in that too.
And she also shared with me that there is a built-in cost on every transaction that they do in fact charges, although it's not itemized on the receipt. And that's one of the things that's talked about in here. You know, you need to, as an educational process, consumers need to know that they pay about a nickel per bag.
As it is.
As it is, right now today.
Sure, to put it in the cost of your food.
Yeah, and so should we give them an extra 5 cents or 10 cents on each transaction for that bag? Those are issues, but so let's, we can get to the actual proposal in a second. Don't let me hold you up.
And then there are costs. So in addition to the costs that we've talked about on the retailer side, there are obviously costs on the side of the city for implementing any new ordinance. And these are some estimates from the work that was done in 2012, 2013. Based on direction from council, we can provide more up-to-date estimates of the direct costs associated with a given policy. There are many options, and so doing detailed analysis of every single one is difficult until we have a direction. But some of the potential costs that could be associated with an ordinance are purchasing reusable bags. And so this is not recommended beyond the initial implementation phase. We've talked about the environmental impacts associated with reusable bags as well. So kind of flooding the market with reusable bags when many people already have their own is not recommended and best practice by many communities, but at least some during the implementation phase. Fee administration, this was an estimate by the Finance Department back in 2013. Outreach and education, $24,000 a year. That's kind of a combination of the estimates that were done in 2013 and then estimates by other communities that have implemented ordinances more recently. And then tracking and monitoring studies. I think it's very important to be able to show the impact of this kind of ordinance going forward. And this is, again, based on work that has been done by other communities as well.
So if there's a fee on the plastic, say the plastic bag, well, if there's a fee on any bags, what do most communities do with the amount of fees? So I know some of it stays with the vendor, and the rest of it comes back to the city, and then they pay these costs. What do most of those communities do with that extra after they've paid these costs?
So the specific language that's in ordinances varies by community. But generally, it has to be tied to specific uses. And so generally, communities are using it for waste diversion or waste reduction efforts.
And so what does that mean?
You know, it could be used to help outreach associated with the recycling program or to support the recycling program. Things that are tied to waste diversion. But I think there would be more research that we would need to do and probably working with legal about what that would look like in terms of the specific uses.
What the connection would be, because there has to be a connection, right?
Yeah.
You couldn't say use it for transportation.
Might not hold up to the TABO rule.
Might have a nexus for all things sustainability though, you know, in a larger picture, you know, it could help the sustainability program.
I think at least some of the costs would be associated with things that are already done by the sustainability program. And so there's that, but I would have to do more research about exactly how much wiggle room there is and what the fee could be used for.
I think suffice to say, and we said it back then too, is this is not meant to be a money grab by the city of Durango. It's not meant to be that at all. And hopefully, we work ourselves out of this fee. So it's not a sustaining fee. Hopefully, Kraggers will take, you know, meet their goal of eliminating all these plastic bags by 2025 and be no longer in the business of collecting this money, so.
Or it could even be used to make it clear that it's not a money generator for the city. You could even put it into a community support grant that supported environmental nonprofits in the community. So it goes back. So we're really separating ourselves from any fee generation use that would go into a, I mean, I'm very careful about not looking like, to Dean's point, I think he was saying money grab that we're trying to nibble and dime to get a larger budget.
That was a myth from 2013. And it was unfortunate, but, and it was never.
Because it's only just meant to discourage.
Correct.
I think most of the communities that have ordinances have made it clear that the intent of the ordinance is to reduce use and therefore
That's right.
the more effective the ordinance, the less revenue is generated.
Right.
I'm curious about where you lose the effectiveness in the fee and where it's so much that you get the dissent from the community. And so I'm interested, and you've got a range from 5 cents to 20 or 25 cents. Do you have a recommendation or do you have information on where's that sweet spot? 5 cents may be not enough to make it advantageous. Maybe Sarah or Kathleen have it. 5 cents may not be enough to make it advantageous to do anything. 25 cents may make the community in an uproar. Is there a middle ground that somebody? And while I have the moment, may I actually just take a minute to thank Kathleen and Sarah for their work. And Kathleen, to thank you for your wonderful comments about city council, you know, about not necessarily wanting us to please or anything, but also recognizing that we make difficult decisions all the time, not just on this. But again, Imogen, if you have any information or if your partners in Durango Beyond Plastic have information on where's that right amount? If you're going to charge a fee.
You could also go the European way. And even in the 80s, they were charging 50 cents a paper bag, which, you know, then obviously, none of the locals, they always brought their own bags. So, I mean, we could go way off the other end and just, you know.
That's where I'm trying to get a sense of that. If there's a fee, what's the right fee?
You have a point to make?
I have a point.
Okay, we want to hear it.
Which is why I tried to bring it over to you.
If you're going to make a point, you need to come to the podium, please.
From what I know about the opposition, it doesn't matter what the number is, any fee, because the opposition has called it taxation without representation. I think that's enough said.
I believe that's.
But what about for other, what about for the businesses? Not so much the opposition, but where is it in the grocery store's best interest to participate in this rather than also becoming an opposition? Where is it that it works for them? And at what level does it, this is not worth implementing for us folks? You know, it's just not working.
And I don't have a recommendation on that. I think you received the recommendation from the Durango Beyond Plastics Group. I know that in Colorado, it's a split pretty much between 10 cents and 20 cents, apart from Frisco, who has 25 cents. I know that there are examples, San Francisco is one, where they started off with a 10-cent fee and had built into the ordinance that it would increase to 25 cents after a period of time. And so there are many examples of different ways that communities have handled this. And I don't know if there's a kind of one sweet spot that works across the board.
And where in, with our government-proposed bills? I mean, I might have to look to you or Durango Beyond Plastic. I understand Governor Polis is looking, or the state legislature is looking, legislature is looking at. legislature is looking at some kind of fee structure as well or plastic ban?
The last I heard, the bill that was currently proposed was postponed indefinitely. And I'm not aware of any newer.
Just got introduced to a committee this week, last week.
Okay.
And I don't know whether the fee is on it.
Great. Any other questions from councillors? Okay, let's.
All I had was the implications of the timing. And I think those are included in your agenda packet as well. Just around the implications of adopting an ordinance, the ordinance potentially being challenged or the timing of when to put it on a ballot. So this is if council decided to take no action, a petitioners committee could still propose an ordinance. And then if council decided to move forward with an ordinance, there are various options. So adopting an ordinance, as in 2013, there is the potential that an ordinance would be challenged and then it could either be repealed or go to a special election. Then there's the option of deferring an ordinance to a ballot even in a November special election, which has a cost of approximately $24,000 to host a special election when there isn't a municipal election. Or deferring to April 2021 municipal election with a ballot initiative.
So I have a question on that. Yeah, that's very helpful. You know, I understand council can make an ordinance. Council could suggest that it go on the ballot, right? Or council could say the community needs to put it, bring it and put it onto that. What would be the, so in the third scenario, not that I'm suggesting we do that, but I want to give folks enough leeway so that we know when we have to make a decision. When would we need to have that decision made so that if the community wanted to organize around and put it on the ballot in April, what's the timeframe for them?
I might draw on Amy. Would be better place to speak to that. But I think it's, it can be brought 90 days before an election, I believe is the timing.
Well, are you talking about going ahead and putting it on the April 2021? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, you know, I recognize we can make a decision as an ordinance and that's something we have to talk about. And we also could say, "Let's put it on the ballot," and that's something we would talk about. But the third option, and I'm not proposing that. I just want to make certain we have a timeframe for what we would need to do, would be if the community chose to put it on the ballot in April 2021, when would they need a previous decision from us? Either a yes, we're going forward with an ordinance? No, we're not doing this, so they're going to be taking it up?
If the, if the community wanted to come with an initiative and to put it on the ballot and they wanted to do it for April.
2021.
2021.
2021. It's, it probably takes about 90 days to go through the process if you're doing it fairly quick. It's about 10 days to form the committee. Then I have 10 days to get their petitions back to them. They have 30 days to get their signatures. It comes back. I have 10 days to get the verification of the signatures. Then, once we have that, it goes to council at their next meeting. And then they have the opportunity to either go ahead and adopt it or put it to an election.
So I'm here in October is what I'm, as I hear you say on that. I'm saying we as a council need to make a decision regarding this, by my mind, around October.
So the question though is if we, if we decide to put it on the ballot, how much time does the council also have to give you to put it on the ballot? It can't be 10 days before the election?
No, if you're going to put it on the ballot and you decide to do that, we would need to go ahead and do the resolution putting it.
No, I mean, in the process you were just talking about where the ordinance comes to us from them and we choose to put it on the ballot.
Okay, then, then once you make that decision, you have to put it to the vote of the people within 90 days. But you also can't put it on a ballot if it's 90 days in front of another election or 30 days after an election. So it just kind of depends, you've got to look at the whole election calendar when that's happening.
Because it would be most optimal, if it was going to be an election, if it were, to be in April 2021. Because there's not, the cost to doing so is almost insignificant compared with like if they tried, someone tried to do it in November.
Absolutely. And so if we're going to put it on, we would do the resolution in January so that we have it set up. We have to send to overseas voters 45 days in advance of our election, the first Tuesday in April.
So in other words, they actually need, they would need to sit down and talk.
I might say, in terms of coming to next steps, I mean, I would hope that we would never have to impose on the public to make that initiative request because that's just not good legislation. We just end up with whatever language. And in the words of former Governor Hickenlooper regarding pot legalization of pot, that was a, they spent, all of us in Colorado spent three or four years sorting out bad wording of the legislation that was hoisted upon government as a result of an initiative, publicly written initiative. So I think we should be able to figure this out. My, and I don't think, you know, as I said, 2013, there's nothing to, you know, what's the hate about, or what's not to hate about 7.2 million plastic bags in your community? So I personally, I was in favor of it before, I'm in favor of it now. But I think what we need to look at is, has been articulated a little bit as about the unintended consequences and as well as the timing. I mean, we've made, as a council, we've made significant advances in our carbon reduction goals and all the other sustainable initiatives that we've advanced. And the concern, and it was, one person wrote a letter, but it's been voiced to me by a number of the people that were involved in the previous iteration and defeat, was will this bring out the organized opposition as it did historically and potentially thus thwarting the full complement of the sustainable initiatives that we've advanced and intend to advance over the next year, years? And so, you know, I think that if there's anything we need to evaluate, it's that. You know, what could it, what unintended consequence could it have to our bigger picture of sustainable efforts? And can we, or should we go big on this thing? I mean, Avon, when I came back from a cast last meeting, they were hopeful of banning all plastics, all polystyrene. And it got, that got cut up in this February 4th deterrent in the legislature. Not getting advanced, didn't get quite honest, it got shot down. So that's going to be a conversation at CAS this coming week as well, is how to recoup from that statewide. So I was hoping, like Barbara mentioned, that the governor would solve this problem for us. We wouldn't have to deal with it. I'm also reminded in the words of the former Durango Herald opinion page, and I'll go back a couple of them, Bill Roberts specifically. He was always talking about, "Oh, it's just symbolic. This is just symbolic." And I'm happy with symbolic, you know? Quite honestly, it's, it is a step. It's a minor step, it could be bigger. But I was always happy with symbolic then and, but, and we, we, council at that time did bear the weight of, and we thought was just a no-brainer. And then come to find out, you know, it was the only act of city council that was, has been overturned by a vote of the public.
Right, and that's also clarified something that I wanted to clarify too. So council has the option also of just adopting an ordinance?
Correct, correct.
Or, and/or putting that ordinance on the ballot.
And for that reason, you know, because of what happened last time, I would think that it would be, council action would be the least, you know, with everything else that we got going on, if we just simply put it to the vote of the public, I think it would be received favorably. But, and then, you know, if those, if the naysayers are still out there and funded as they were last time, they, you know, let it ride. But I think that way we aren't thwarting a number of our other initiatives is kind of what I've been thinking through.
So you mean, supporting it but having it on the ballot?
Correct. Let the votes, let the public decide. And in advance, we would need to decide whether it's 10 cents, 20 cents, who gets the money, all those issues. And we certainly have a well-written paper about what the, with the local.
And we'd have to decide is it a plastic ban and a paper bag fee or a fee on vote?
I was going to ask if you had an idea.
So I think we could figure out in a further study session with the work that Imogen's done to date, we could figure that out and then anticipate and commit to putting it on the ballot next April. This would be my thought.
Interesting, other councillor thoughts?
Maybe we need to talk about a couple.
No, I appreciate your perspective, thank you.
Instead of, I don't know that we're here to make the final decision, but can you outline what you're expecting for next steps? What do you want to hear from us right now? So we don't go round and round and round. We could go around for the next two hours on this issue.
Right.
I think we were seeking direction on next steps. So there's three options that are on the screen. So either direct staff to provide additional background research on specific topics or policy options, direct staff to compare an ordinance for consideration or take no action. It sounds as though another incentive could be a future study session.
Future study session, potential ballot measure.
I'd like to look at what a potential ballot measure would look like. Because one, I want to give this group an answer so that they know where we're going and we don't keep dragging it out for too long. And I see the merit in waiting probably until the spring for the election there, giving enough time. But I would like just to set a, kind of a timeframe for when we'll reach a decision. So to Chris's point, we don't drag it out only tonight, but in the future.
Yeah, I would suggest that, I don't hear anybody saying to take no action. So that's off the table. And I think one and two makes sense to me at least, and let's go forward with that. And then I would just add for consideration of the council that a lot's changed since 2013. We saw a lot of data in your packet relative to the number of cities that have taken action on this.
Absolutely.
Without the kind of pushback we received. And it's a heck of a lot easier for council to make a decision and put it, put the whole community through a ballot initiative. So I personally would prefer, if we can get some clarity on what the council would like on that ballot, on that language of the ordinance, that we consider adopting it. And then if there's opposition out there, then so be it. They can do their own ballot initiative. But I think enough has changed. There's a lot more clarity around the issue of whether plastics are good in our community or not than there was that many years ago. And I also think you should consider, as you're looking at this, that we aren't like a lot of those cities that you put up on the board, especially the first group and number one. That, you know, when the fee was the issue last time. And I think we really need to pay attention to that. Because for whatever reason, that idea of taxation, as was articulated earlier, was the core issue that became the thing that threw us back and overturned that. I think we got to pay attention to that, we have to listen to the community. And like Dean said, perhaps the step that may be somewhat symbolic would be ban plastic bags and consider banning clay paper at the same time, but to make a decision.
You know, I would actually, I agree with councillor Patine only because I'm so excited to see this action take place and I think we need it so desperately, that I don't really want to wait until April 2021. It just seems like such a long time to wait. We tried this in 2013. I'm looking at this year that these other cities have implemented this telluride. 2011, I mean, we're so far behind thinking of the bags that have been used even just since then in these cities. It's unfortunate that it didn't pass in 2013, but I would agree councillor Patine, that it was the fee, that's what I've heard. And so maybe we really carefully reevaluate what that fee is. And I've also seen that other cities have revised their fees as they've gone along. So you could start with, you know, we could analyze that fee. Start with a fee that we think will not create the opposition that it created in 2013 and find that if it isn't becoming as effective as we want to, we can adjust it. Or, you know, we could play with it in that way as well.
So you'd create, this is actually very interesting to hear. You would create an ordinance now rather than waiting?
I would love to see it implemented right away.
And I would add, you know, having gone through that in my other consultation, I wouldn't not take that off the table. I think that if that's the goal, then hit the other direction too, which is maybe we go larger and.
I just am excited, I feel like it could be, you know, I feel like we're behind. And I just feel like, we all know we've become so much more educated on the detriments of plastics and also the emissions of the paper. And so I would not only just ban plastics and all plastics, but I would also look at a recycled paper at the same time. You know, it looks like they have 40% recycled and 100%. I would like to see a high percentage of recycled paper as well, if we could do that.
Let me ask one more question. Would you consider then an ordinance now, as soon as we can reach a decision, implementing it? And then, there's always a backup position, putting it on a ballot in April 2021? If you needed to?
If you needed to. And an ordinance, I mean, I also though, I think an important part of this for me, and I learned, you know, I thought it was very valuable to have the community sessions that we had for the bridge. And I would want to make sure we had enough opportunity to hear from our community here. I know we usually do one public hearing with every ordinance, but maybe we would want to do more. I don't know, I just think it's valuable. I know Durango Beyond Plastics has done a lot of outreach, but I also just think it's an important step in anything we're doing that is substantial like this.
And I'm not advocating one way or the other about what the ordinance looks like or sounds like. But the one thing specifically that's changed since 2013 is that Aspen's fee was upheld as not being taxation.
Right.
And so the taxation without representation, although they may still feel that way and there may still be objections because of that, has legally been moved away, which that wasn't.
That's a huge, that was a huge hurdle in a victory.
There was a, pardon me, too sorry to interrupt you councillor. The other, or Mayor Proton, the other is, you know, I really think that in the initial onset, there's things that we could do to incentivize this, to take some of the, you know, to make it more palatable potentially, like the handing out of the plastic bags at the onset and the slow implementation of it. I appreciate that sometimes the communities have done longer implementations to allow stores to utilize their stock and get rid of their stock. I understand the need for that kind of stuff, I think we would have to play with it. But, you know, maybe we give out, you know, you do the free bags for a while until people get enough stock. So I don't know.
Sarah, keep making those 8,000 bags.
I know.
I stepped up here again and actually you guys talked through what I was going to approach you on, but it was still just for clarity's purpose. It sounds like you would like us to come back with some policy.
Recommendations.
Recommendations.
Yes.
And we would do that. But the ordinance, we'll get the policy recommendations figured out before we go and draft an ordinance. We don't want to use multiply draft ordinances. And then, and then it's a decision as to how you want to proceed in terms of strategy, whether it's election or go straight to ordinance. And so there's a kind of multiple steps here. I think we got some level of direction on the policies. And certainly Imogen working with Beyond Plastics, they had a recommendation in here. I think we can work with that as a starting point to bring something back to you.
That would be great.
Starting point is always good.
Back to my previous conversation, you know, let's let Imogen tell us how it fits into all the other sustainable aspects and what potential unintended consequences there might be, timing-wise or otherwise. Maybe it's nothing, but, and then also the aspect of going larger, you know, with bigger bans, just not bags.
Not on like marijuana conversation. What we didn't want to do is make some preconceived assumptions about the policy direction. Spent a lot of time on that to find out maybe there was an interest in moving that direction right now. But I think we got enough sense of direction right now that we have the ability to go back and do some more good work and bring it forward.
We hope that there's community support for this. And so we'll look forward to listening to the community and hearing feedback. But I think that this is a general direction that we'd love to hear.
Two more questions?
Yes.
I'd like, I'd like you, everybody, to take a moment and remember the nights that there were people standing outside. If there's a referendum or if it's by the ballot, there's, I think that's evidence of a huge change since 13. And I think we have a huge effort to get a vote, and I don't think it would be a problem.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your hard work and all of the group of people that have been working with you.
Yep, really, really appreciate it.
I just want to say, you can do that.
Absolutely.
What I like about the shirts being used as the bags is because I do know the numbers for the cotton and how the climate impact is. And it's, there's a.
And it's, there's a Stanford article that's worth looking at. So to the extent that we can reuse and reuse somebody else's t-shirts and use it for carrying groceries, I'm all in.
Okay, great. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate that. And so with that, we'll move on to council reports and actions. Councilors?
I'm going to pass. I didn't have any meetings.
Okay.
I'll, I'll chat a moment. So I went to another ASFLC center meeting.
Great.
And it was very interesting. And one of the things that I would like us to consider that they do is they have their agenda broadcast on the monitors during the meetings so that people in the audience or people on television can have an option to see the agenda. So eventually we, you know, might want to have that discussion. We did that once for.
Study session.
Yeah.
I had to work with Victor on how it'll work with the, but I think it makes sense. We just have to figure out, making sure that it lines out so it's not green.
Yeah, I got you. I got you. Yeah, I mean, whatever, yeah.
But yes, I love the idea.
But I just loved it that there are, that they are doing that we can learn from. And I thought that was really impressive and, and they're, they're very excited and they're very excited also, they stalled a little bit on coming and giving a presentation because they wanted to have this whole thing perfect. And I said, no, just go for it. And so Mark Metalski, their advisor, also said, just do it, do it before the end of, you know, do it before April because otherwise you guys are headed toward the end of school. So that was really fun. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was that Councilor Nowsworthy and I took a tour of the ALP pump plant across from the sewer plant, as well as driving up to Lake Night Horse to watch where the water comes in from being pumped out of the Anamis River. And then we drove around, Steve Harris was giving the tour, Russ was going to go also, but he was ill unfortunately that day. So then we drove around to the outlet, the dam outlet at Lake Night Horse and saw what that all looked like and where the potential water lines that come, that would deliver water from Lake Night Horse to a potential ridges basin or some such water treatment facility. And also looked at areas, although as a city we haven't talked about specific, I mean, the staff might have, but because it's property, we haven't talked about specific locations. There were some that seemed obvious to Steve, so we stopped and looked at a few of those. And then we, we drove, I don't remember where else we drove, was that it?
That's pretty much it.
That's it. But it was very informative, very interesting. And I would, I think Dean, you've done a similar tour, I believe, and I would be highly encouraged, the two of you, if you haven't to do so. I also, today in the infrastructure meeting, also encouraged the infrastructure advisory board members to do the same thing so that they would learn more about, be fits on the ground about where the water treatment plant might be or how the logistics of things. And so that was very exciting. One of the other things that I gave to the infrastructure advisory board was, this was in the, I believe in the CML thing that we just received, but I'm not positive. The city of Westminster, I just noticed that they had adopted a utility reserve fund that was, what was most important was in 2006, the city council adopted a set of fiscal policies for how the utility fund operates and manages water, wastewater rates, debt, repair, replacement, capital improvements and reserves. And what that flickered in my mind for me, especially when we had the conversation with Wayne and Devin and Amber about reserves in general, and to Councilor Nowsworthy's mention that our 2015 reserve at this point is 184,000, that one of the things that we might need, we might eventually want to task this strategy in long-term finance committee with is what kind of policies should we have around reserves? I'm sure they might be different for each fund, given these considerations, capital, projects, operations and maintenance, those kind of things. So, or particularly the ones that get revenues, what happens if there's a significant revenue drop? For example, if the, we can't provide water and so there isn't any revenue. So just an idea for the future about policies that the city council might want to adopt concerning reserves, both general fund and enterprise.
So just in the spirit of letting you know what's, what's happening in the, in downtown Durango and all around, this week is the 15th Annual Durango Independent Film Festival. So starting Wednesday night, there'll be 112 films ranging from three minutes to 90 minutes. And we have several city employees who volunteer in that capacity year-round and during the week. And I see them all the time when I'm there. So I want to give a shout out to the folks. I'm not going to call you out by name, but I do want to recognize that we have several folks who've been long, city employees who've been long-term volunteers. And it's just one more great cultural activity here in Durango.
That's great. Thank you.
You just reminded me déjà vu of going into that plant that, across from the sewer treatment plant. Oh my God. Doing that tour, we did it with Senator Bennett and Senator Cory Gardner. So it was a bipartisan kind of tour. And then we went up to.
And water doesn't care.
Followed your same footsteps, yeah. But looking at the turbines and the pumps in that, in that facility, the size of those and much less the noise of those convinced me to leave the sewer treatment plant in Santa Rita Park where it currently is. That was the, you know, when I saw the size and the electrical demand of those pumps, I thought if we put every piece of shit on the, on the pump system like that forever, in perpetuity for the city of Durango, that is not a sustainable or wise decision. And that's, you know, one of the reasons that we ended up, I voted for leaving the, and that was the last one. I was the last holdout with Mayor Christina Rinderly at the time. But if you look at those pumps and you'd go, wow, what happens if there's any kind of electrical outage? And we're, we're in deep trouble. I'll say deep, something else, but, but at any rate. So on a lighter note, next week, tomorrow I'll be driving to Denver for the legislative meeting of CAST, Colorado Association of Ski Towns. I'll be as president in introducing the governors, our keynote speaker at lunch on Thursday. But the real work is the, we always get a legislative update from Colorado Municipal League and economic statewide, economic update from Lead School of Business. But then Dan Gibbs is our new executive director for the Department of Natural Resources, and he'll be talking about Colorado Water Plan and a number of other critical issues for Durango, followed by Nathan Fay, he's the executive director of the Outdoor Recreation Industry Office. He's Luis Benitez, that was Hickeloper's energy czar. And so it'll be the first time we'll meet him and his new efforts relative to the Recreation Industry Office. And followed up by Allison George, who's the director of Colorado Division of Housing. And so that's always interesting and always put in a plug for things like more tax credits for Durango and, and what we're doing, and what the statewide is doing for, for housing issues across the board. Then we have a meeting that night. My guest is Barbara McLaughlin. We always invite our legislators. We'll have Don Coram and Barbara from this part of the world, that we have a number of other legislators that'll be joining us for dinner that night. That's just good, relaxed, non-law gaming communication over dinner and then come back for more work here, so. I apologize for my little slip on the sewer treatment plant discussion.
That's okay.
But that's the facts.
The memories.
That was the memory.
Okay, I wanted to remind the public that we have a public meeting on the use of e-bikes on soft surface trails. And that is this Wednesday, March 4th, from 5:00, 7:00 PM at the Durango Community Recreation Center. Currently, we allow e-bikes on four hard surface trails in Durango. This is regarding our soft surface trails, if you're interested. And it's also time to start thinking about spring cleanup with this nice weather that starts, it's going to pick up, it's going to begin April 6th and it's going to run for five weeks. And so people can start thinking about that. I was going to give an update on our Creative Economy Commission. We had a great meeting last week. It was so much fun. We heard for, from three applicants for our Durango Creates Grants, which are creative community-based projects. We give up to $5,000. And we awarded three grants, so total $12,000 in grants we awarded at this one meeting. And our only, our annual budget is only $15,000 unfortunately, because these are very high-yield programs that really return, that really impact a lot of people. We're going to do, one, one, and one, one is for a mural on the Cornerstone Building, 3473 Main Avenue by the old post office. It's the old Southwest, or it is the Southwest Center for Independence, and they're going to do a really beautiful mural there to build awareness around neurological deficits. One is for the Anamis City Market. They're doing five different markets to take underutilized spaces and create access to art and music and performance and culture. So that's a really neat thing to see happen. And that's going to be in North Main and some of the vacant park lots along North Main throughout the next couple of months and, or, and through summer and into fall. And then there's, they're also supporting Stillwater Party in the Park, which is a huge event annually, brings 700 to 800 families and significant youth involvement. So it was really neat to see that happen with the Durango Creative, or Durango Economy Commission. And, and we still have two positions left on that economy, on that commission, and applications are due March 18th. And so I think we've all gotten that link, if you know of anyone interested. And that's all mine. Anybody else? That's it? Okay, great meeting. Thank you, everybody, for joining us and listening and participating. And with that, our next meeting is, what is it? March 17th?
17th.
March 17th. See you next Tuesday, March 17th. Thank you to our PIO professionals in the back. Thank you for bringing us live on D-Gub.